Good morning. It's nine o'clock. We are called to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting, and I'll ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, individual, liberty, justice, and law.
Before we start this morning, I want to recognize a Ms. Brenda Augustin, who's the public affairs specialist for FEMA. She does not want to speak. I just wanted to recognize her. So, the commissioners have a card in front of them. She's here in respects to, of course, the flooding that's been going on. So you have her card, and if anyone has any questions, she said, feel free to call her. She'll be engaged with us here over the period of time. Brenda, thank you, and look forward to it. With that, there's a copy of the Public Meetings Act located on the north wall of the legislative chambers here. There's an automatic defibrillator located in the back of the room for anyone for health reasons. And also, if you have a cellphone, I ask that you would silence it or turn it off. With that, we were called to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Before we start, Commissioner Kraft, briefly.
We have a group of young Southeast Asian leadership initiative here, and somebody asked me if they could take pictures. Yes, you can. And anything the county board pays for is owned by the public. Same thing with the city council. Unless it's privileged information, it's owned by the public. So if we do a study, it gets out to the public once it's finished. Now, it's a draft, but once it's finished. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to item A, which is the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2019. And item B is a call for a meeting, and said Tuesday, April 16, 2019, as the date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle's vote will not appear, but he does vote yes, as do the rest of the commissioners. Motion passes.
Citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on items not listed on the Board of Equalization's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Saying none, we'll go to items D and E. What's the will of the board?
Most approved.
And adjourned?
Yes.
There's most approved and adjourned by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Go on now to the Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A. Item one is minutes and claims. Item letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 26, 2019. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, April 9, 2019. What's the will of the board?
Most approved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item two is the consent agenda. There's eight items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I just have a couple of quick questions. One of them is on item B, and I think Mr. Holmes here from Environmental Services. This is the extension of the agreement with SCS Field Services and Engineers for nonroutine landfill. Original agreement was April 26, 2016, which included the potential for four additional three-year terms. This budgeted for $25,000 a term. Just very briefly, what are we talking about in terms of nonroutine landfills?
There are two different -- Kent Holman, Environmental Services Director. There are two different aspects to landfill gas system maintenance. One is routine, which is just routine maintenance activities. You can -- it's somewhat analogous to changing the oil on your car. The other stuff is nonroutine. Those are things like subsidence in soil that cause issues with the gas collection system and things like that. Those are somewhat unanticipated, but we have to budget for those because they do crop up from time to time. They're called nonroutine because we don't necessarily know exactly what those are going to be. But they're part of the system, and we have the contract broken into two different parts, the routine and the nonroutine. What you're looking at today is the nonroutine part, and this is the first three-year extension that's possible under that original agreement. So, potentially, we could have three more additional three-year extensions to this particular agreement in the future.
So, this vendor, SCS Field Services and Engineers--
Correct.
--provides these maintenance kind of checkups on our gas capturing system at -- is it at Pheasant Point?
No. This is State Street, 126th.
Oh, State Street. I'm sorry.
Yes, 126th and State.
And that's been an ongoing service--
Correct.
--that they've provided for us?
Correct. It's fairly specialized service.
The thing that kind of caught my attention was nonroutine landfills, and I was contacted by a representative of one of our NRDs about concern that they have relative to waste that's being generated by the flood. You know, waste removal is occurring on a massive scale region-wide, and there apparently is, I'm not sure if it's licensed landfills, accepting some of this waste, particularly in an area that has runoff to Cunningham Lake. And they were concerned--
Okay.
--whether or not that would be something that we would have, you know, purview over or something that would come under your jurisdiction for regulation or--
No, typically not. No. If there's concerns about a particular landfilling of an area that's not -- that we don't have association with, State Street, where this contract is relevant to, is a closed landfill. There's no additional fill that's going into that. Pheasant Point is the active landfill. We have a contract with Waste Management, so that is what's called a Subtitle D landfill that can take certain types of wastes, along with municipal solid waste. If there are construction debris landfills and other types of things that are out there, those would all be under the purview of the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality.
At the state level?
Correct.
Okay. And it is reasonable to anticipate that there's going to be a massive increase in these construction debris landfills as a result of the flood, is--
There could be. Yeah, there could be. They are not necessarily authorized to take all of the materials that are going to be coming out of flood-impacted areas. I mean, there's going to be materials in there that are specifically excluded from going into a construction debris landfill.
And that will be regulated, you say, at the DEQ state level?
Correct. Correct. And I'd say that's probably -- if there are some specific things that you are concerned or a constituent is concerned about, then I can certainly provide you with a contact person at DEQ. It would probably be Dave Haldeman, and I can get you contact information if that's of concern. But typically, they're going to react to some type of a citizen complaint or concern on something like that.
I note that we did a recent kind of a redo of some of our materials coming into our landfill when we did the new fee schedule.
Correct.
And some of it, if I recall, dealt with this type of debris, this--
Yes, yes. There are transfer trailer rates that were established that now provide incentive for folks to bring that in on transfer trailers, which are semis. And so, there are some specific conditions attached to that, but there are special rates for that, and those rates did go into effect yesterday.
And are we seeing kind of a spike in those materials coming into our landfill now as a result of the flood?
I can tell you that I would say it's not necessarily a spike. We're seeing pretty much kind of normal activity based on kind of what we would expect. There's certainly more flood-related materials coming in, but to say that it's, you know, a real big spike, no, not -- certainly not yet. Now, Waste Management, I think in discussions with them, they would say that, yes, what they've seen historically around the country is that maybe there's a couple of weeks lag, and then we may start seeing a spike in that. So we'll see. I mean, we're continuing to monitor that. We are kind of still in a damage assessment phase that we have to do as part of the FEMA regulations and things there. So, we're just still kind of on the outset of that and just getting into that. So, and just to be clear, all of that stuff doesn't pertain necessarily--
Right, right.
--to the SCS country. Doesn't pertain at all to the--
That's good to know, because when I saw nonroutine landfill, it was immediately what I thought. This is going to be a nonroutine year, I got to think.
Yeah, there's a few things not quite routine the last couple of weeks.
Well, you've done a great job handling it so far, so kudos.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, there's a motion, a second for citizens' comments. Please vote.
Oh, yes.
I mean, yes, consent.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item three, recognitions and proclamations. Letter A is recognizing the following county employees for retirement. James Maguire, who's retired from the Douglas County Sheriff's Office after 25 -- 28 years of service. I don't see him here, but with that, I want to thank him for his years of service here, and with that, I will turn it over to his uncle.
Well, Jim Maguire is -- his mother is Patty Howell, my sister, and so Jim is my nephew. I would claim him much to his chagrin when he was down here in the course of times. Jim, his last name is spelled erroneously. His last name is Maguire, M-A-G-U-I-R-E, and there's two versions of the Irish. Of course, we don't -- we need to confuse things, and that's why that's done. So, anyway, it's Maguire, M-A-G-U-I-R-E, and I certainly wish him well. He's an Omaha police officer now, and he is also state president of the Fraternal Order of Police. Got his hands full.
You, Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. I just want to quickly add, from my volunteer fire service, I've gotten to work with Jim, and I have gotten to watch him firsthand in some masterful de-escalation in taking a really tense situation and talking people down and calming things down. I've seen it with other deputies as well, but the most impressive I ever saw was with Jim. And I just can't let that go without saying something. I mean, how impressive that is to take what could be a violent situation and calm people. He's good at what he does.
That's a wonderful thing to say. Thank you. I'll make sure he knows that.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I'd like to add my kudos to Jim. I've known him for a long time, worked with him on numerous FOP projects. He's been a leader in that organization for a number of years, and a great first responder and just a super guy. So, kudos.
Thank you.
Commissioner Borgeson.
I want to congratulate Jim on his retirement and his new position as well. One of the things I'll remember Jim most about is his demeanor during union negotiations. As you know, most of our employees are under a union, and there's a lot of negotiation that goes on throughout the year, and we have a great negotiator on staff, Marco San Martin. But Jim was always coming to the table, ready to work, not to fight, not to argue. It was just very -- he was just very good at it, and he will be missed, both for that and his service to the citizens.
Just one quick. Naturally, I have a story about Jim, but I was at a political event, and there were quite a few people milling around, and it was at a restaurant. And everybody's dressed sort of like I am and all that. Anyway, so I happened to glance, I looked across the room, and I said, "Who in the hell is that?" And it was this long-haired guy and a beard, and just looked like the devil, crummy clothes. And I thought, "Who is that?" You know, I just didn't get it. And all of a sudden, he waved at me, and I thought, "Who?" So I walked over. It was Jim. Undercover. He was undercover.
Okay, so with that, is there a motion, a second? We need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Borgeson. And again, we all thank Jim for his years of service, wish him well in his new job, and hope everything goes well. Please vote.
Let the record show, the motion was made by Uncle Mike. I vote yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item B is a resolution declaring April 2019 as National County Government Month and recognizing the 2019 National Association of Counties Initiative of connecting the unconnected, aiming at demonstrating how counties deliver people-centered services to the residents nationwide. With that, I'll turn it over to not only Commissioner Borgeson, but the incoming national president in July. Commissioner Borgeson.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, and a former NACO president. This we do every year to recognize during the month of April what counties do, and it always amazes me when I go to speak to groups and I do my -- as Mark Kraft, Commissioner Kraft says it is my kindergarten County Government 101 demonstration or presentation PowerPoint. But they are absolutely amazed at what counties do, and I think it's important every year to recognize what we do and what we provide to the citizens of Douglas County, not just in the month of April, but throughout the year. So, whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serve more than 300 million Americans and provide essential services to create healthy, safe, vibrant communities, and whereas since 1991, the month of April has been National County Government Month, an annual celebration of county government and an opportunity to show that counties matter. And whereas the 2019 National Association of Counties President Greg Cox Initiative is themed Connecting the Unconnected, and whereas the goals of this year's NACO initiative is to demonstrate how counties deliver people-centered services to residents nationwide, and whereas Douglas County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of residents in sensible and cost-effective ways, and whereas Douglas County invests more than $200 million annually in programs and services for our residents, including public safety, community mental health, general assistance, corrections, and much, much more. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County and Nebraska, that this board hereby declares the month of April 2019 as a National County Government Month and encourages all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to learn more about the important role that counties play in the well-being of our communities and to participate in county government awareness activities dated the second day of April 2019. Make motion to approve.
There's a motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item four, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioners-related items that are not on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? And let me say, if you're here to speak on item G3, you will -- I'm going to rein you in because you have time to speak on that later. If you're here to speak on G3, please wait. But any other citizens' comments, please come forward.
Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I want to present an alternative proposal to your justice reform project. I have imagery here that I'd like to present as well. Before you is kind of a skeleton outline of a budget worked on. The two major components is the downtown complex at $80 million, and the current location at $30 million, $34 million. This budget has two faces on both locations, in the downtown and at 42nd and Woolworth in that area. Here, I put together what face one and face two of the complex would look like. You have property here with the MUD building, and you have these two properties that would be vacated by the Housing Authority and by dot com. And then here, we have in addition to the Civic Center that connects a skywalk with these offices. These would be government offices. Haven't really put forth an idea on how to use the MUD building. However, there's a connector here into the new complex, the Justice Tower, that could house four or five levels, two being court spaces, and one perhaps being attorneys and so on. No connection between the two buildings here, between the district court and the new complex. Only one skywalk here. Then, for the current location, which would be face one, only here that I have pictured, would be parking garage, so it'd be a replat. Got a parking garage here, maybe five levels, one level being below grade, or maybe five levels above grade. And then here would be a replat that would be separate from this facility. Renovations for this facility at this location is well outlined by Mr. Kavanaugh. I agree that this is a good space for programs and wellness. That's about all the imagery. So, the two faces look like this on two locations. Downtown complex, vacate, and other contingency. So, you'd supplement Housing Authority and the dot com departure, some legal service fees, and project management, and other contingencies. And then, so the new construction on first face would be the Justice Tower on face one. So, that'd be a new building construction and renovations throughout the area and the neighborhood. So, face two in the downtown would have the Civic Center addition with the sidewalk and other contingencies. Face one on the current location for DCYC, you have the parking garage, replat, and renovations and youth programs. And face two for the current location, you have new buildings, which would include courthouse and arboretum, and then another building for dormitorium wellness, and a third building for programatics and education. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. 68132. I'd like to continue my lecture on American democracy. I noticed our library started out a couple weeks ago with a presentation and a teacher workshop, but it's not a democracy. Oh, by the way, the Douglas County Board has their stamp on one of the things they handed out the other day at that and at the lecture they give. And I kind of wonder about the timing of things sometime. All these young people behind me here, they probably understand the word democracy from their viewpoint. A true democracy, as in Greece, was such that 51% of us here this morning could take a vote and remove any one of you as officers of this body. That's democracy. Now, would you prefer us to be a democracy or a republic? Or we go out and elect you? That's what it's supposed to be, and you're supposed to represent us. But I understand that this might be my last day for public comment. Do these young people understand that this body might be saying that you can no longer do this? You can no longer do that in your country. You may not like that, would you? We may no longer be able to do this here. And I think that's wrong, ladies and gentlemen. I don't think it's constitutional either. And since I'm -- probably won't get another chance. Later on, you mentioned, I guess you're saying, about the other legislation topic, but on the topic of child and youth services, I understand from the state constitution that it's illegal, according to the constitution, to send any youth out of the state of Nebraska for any reason.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mike Boyle, 1027 Marcy Plaza 201. I'm appearing today as a private citizen because I'm not allowed to speak as a county commissioner, and I do want to tell Larry that this is not the last time you'll be allowed to speak. On the contrary, I, and I'm sure others on the board, are looking forward to your comments. They're valuable. There is no attempt to stifle first amendment speech. We want to continue that. Many of us are frustrated because we're not allowed to answer you or to give you the respect that you deserve as a citizen making comments. So, we're not able to tell you that we think that was a good idea, that we agree with you, that we disagree with you. So, we're just supposed to sit here like a couple stump -- seven stumps on a log. Plus, our directors have messages that could contribute as well, and it's really a loss in the public dialogue to tell us under the open meetings law that we're not allowed to say anything back to you to participate in a conversation. And hopefully today, I will make a suggestion today, and hopefully today, we'll be able to adopt a change so that we can be courteous to you and respond to your comments. And for the record, Larry, I appreciate your coming here and telling us your messages. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Saying none, we'll move on to item five, which is presentations. What we're gonna do is, I've asked, I'm gonna move item D up because I know they have a schedule, but everybody under the presentation, since there's so many today, I'm gonna ask you to take about 15 minutes and we'll try to give a reasonable time for questions. But we'll start with the Young Asian Leaders Initiative. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Kraft, and again, we're gonna, you'll watch the light, we're gonna try to keep everybody in 15 minutes because of the amount of presentations today, so.
Say, Chris, excuse me. Would you consider moving up the people from the university who are going to speak?
They're going next.
They are next?
They're going next. Commissioner Kraft, if you wanna.
Every now and then, I blank out with the name at the last minute. But Val, see, I couldn't remember, two seconds ago. Val McPherson, would you come to the mic and explain what's going on and introduce your youth?
Val McPherson.
I know you're not youth, young adults.
Val McPherson, 6415 Glenwood Road, Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for your hospitality for what is now the seventh delegation of YCILY. And in honor of Commissioner Kraft, I will tell you that YCILY stands for Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative. You have 21 people, actually 21 was not feeling well this morning, but you have 21 people here in Omaha for a five-week Civic Engagement and Leadership Institute. As I said earlier, this is the seventh time that University of Nebraska at Omaha has hosted this delegation. So 148 future leaders of 11 different Southeast Asian countries have had the opportunity to experience civic engagement and leadership in Omaha and to specifically come here and see the commissioners in action. I would like the 20 that are here this morning from 11 different Southeast Asian countries They will be spending four weeks with us here in Omaha, and then we will go to Boston, New York, and we will end up in Washington, DC, where they will be debriefed. They have been selected by our embassies in their 11 countries as the future leaders of those countries, and it is because they have already shown extraordinary leadership skill. This particular program was created a few years ago to bring the best and the brightest from Southeast Asia to the United States. This program is very similar in terms of how these people are selected to the State Department's International Visitor Leadership Program. That is a program that has been going on since the beginning of World War II. People are selected by our embassies, vetted by the State Department as the leaders and future leaders of the countries around the world in that program. Vetting is very, very similar for this program. In that program that has been going on since World War II, 335 of the people who have been selected in a very similar process have gone on to be either prime minister or president of their country. So there is a high probability that you will have a future leader of one of the 11 ASEAN countries standing before you here today. Once again, thank you very, very much for your hospitality. The group definitely appreciated the opportunity to meet most of you prior to this meeting and to have the opportunity to see how county government works here in Omaha, Nebraska. Any questions or comments?
Well, I would like to point out to the young adults here that this is being streamed live on one of our cable channels. And we have, Douglas County, Nebraska, has a YouTube channel where you can watch this at your leisure. So, yeah, these are open meetings, open and distributed to the public, and we reach out to you to be, when you become involved in your governments and leaders, I don't, I, yeah, don't be a dictator. Be an enlightened leader. And I know some of you may have had questions, so if you do have a question, please come to the podium and ask it, and you'll be asked to state your name and your country, so we know. Surely you have a question. Statement? Critique? Criticism?
Please, someone step forward.
Okay. Would you tell us the 11 countries, please?
Yes, I would, I would like one person from each country to introduce themselves and their country. Start here.
Yeah, you'll need to come up to the mic so that it can be heard by the audience.
Once again, thank you for your hospitality, and it was such an honor to be here and to experience this. My name is Sui, and I'm from Myanmar. I'm here for a live Val introduced to participate in a program called YCILY, Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Patricia. With me is Nurhati Tangeng. We're from the Philippines.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for to have us here, and it is honored for us to be in this meeting. And I'm Phi, I'm from Indonesia. I have my three other friends here with me. Just raise your hands. Okay, we have Handra, Tira, and Barry. We all are from different islands in Indonesia. As you know, we have, we have so many islands in Indonesia. Thank you very much.
First of all, thank you for having us today. I'm Rudy from Thailand, and we are very honored to be here today. And I'm here with other two from Thailand, with Fair and Sarah. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for having us in here. My name is Ricardo Valente from Timor-Leste. I'm the only Timoris here. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay.
You can bend down.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sally Honeyhazman. I'm from Brunei Darussalam.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Sinthomansamperse, or maybe from Laos, and I'm the only Laos here. Thank you for having us today. Thank you.
Morning, sirs and mams. My name is Alex Liu. I'm from Singapore. Yeah, I'm the only delegate here.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Sun from Vietnam, and it's my honor to be here today with Ms. J also from Vietnam. Thank you, everyone.
I noticed you mentioned your name and address when you do this, so, I'm Naufa Nasrullah, Cheras, 56100 Kuala Lumpur, Malaysia.
My name is Naufa. I'm from Malaysia. With me is Rocky. She's also from Malaysia. And we've been here for a week, and we live every minute of it, so we thank you for the hospitality of Omaha, Nebraska.
And I think we'd like to applaud you guys. I consider it a special honor that you come and visit us and that we give you an introduction before this meeting.
I would like to, I would like to close by saying that, as you all know, Omaha is an amazing city in regards to their exact theme, civic engagement and leadership. And this, of course, wasn't planned for this delegation to be here during the worst natural disaster in the history of the state of Nebraska, but that's the way it worked out. And they're having an extraordinary opportunity to see Omaha at its very, very best in regards to the outstanding contribution by so many individuals and organizations to respond to this flood. I'd also like to acknowledge the incredible job that the University of Nebraska at Omaha is doing with this program. This is the seventh time. The original grant, UNO was only supposed to get three delegations, one a year for three years. The State Department was so impressed with the way UNO was handling this program that they added two more under the original grant. UNO did not think it was going to get another grant, that this program would not be renewed. But not only was the program renewed, and UNO was given the opportunity to host two more delegations per year for the next three years, but they have also been asked to oversee the YCILY programs at Kennesaw State University in Atlanta, Georgia, and at Arizona State University. So I wanted to be sure that UNO got the recognition that they deserve for not only doing a wonderful job of the program as it existed, but actually accelerating the program nationally. Thank you very much for your time.
Commissioner Borges.
Val, before you leave, one of the things, if, I mean, I'm so impressed every time you bring this group of young people to us and they demonstrate their leadership, again, just for being here, you were chosen, and that's quite an honor. But they're also leaders and examples for other youth, not only in their countries but here, and we so appreciate that because we need a lot of positive things that we can explain to our youth of, if you do things right, stay on this right path, and you guys are perfect examples of that. Is there a way to maybe, from the classes that have come before us, give us an update at some point of where they are today? You've named 300, and some of them have gone on to something, but get a little bit more specific of what they're doing these days because, again, this, this is really, really impressive stuff.
Well, thank you for that opportunity. I just two days ago got a text from one of the alumni of this program that was here just six months ago, and she sent me a text with a picture of her and an article that had been in the newspaper about her being the youngest person to have ever been chosen to represent Southeast Asia on a very prestigious information panel discussion in Southeast Asia. And this was someone who was here only six months ago. We have, we have story after story from the alumni, which with this group will now be 148, and with, six months ago, with the 21 from Kennesaw State University and the 21 that are now at Arizona State University, that will be another 42 that we have had the opportunity to work with. And the stories are absolutely amazing, and this is just the very beginning of this program and of the amazing leadership that these people will continue to show in their countries.
That's great. Thank you again for, for your leadership.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like Dan Ash to stand up and introduce himself. And would you go to the mic and explain how we have a searchable database for every check written? We are held accountable. Anybody can go and look and say, oh, Mark Kraft had a check of $2 billion written to him on the county account. Well, if I did, somebody'd see it, because there are people who look at this stuff. And so it's one of the checking balances. Dan, would you explain?
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. So like Commissioner Kraft was saying, we have a, all the payments that the county makes is our public record, and we have a database on our website where you can search by a vendor name or by an account code, and it will pull up information on how many, how much money's been paid to that company or individual and what it was for. And, yeah, like Commissioner Kraft was saying, it's, it's one of the cool things about working for the government is that you can, you know, there's so much information, that's public information, I don't think people realize, and that's one of them is what, who we pay and how much we pay them and why we pay them. So if you went on douglascountyclerk.org, if you ever wanted to check it out, there's, goes back three years. And if you want, if you're interested in even further back, then just contact our office and we'll get that information for you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Hope you all enjoy your time here and represent well. See you all. With that, we'll move on to item B, which is presentation by Craig, Dr. Craig Mayer and Dr. John Bartle, professors at the Public Administration at the University of Nebraska at Omaha for Property Tax Policy Options for Nebraska's counties. Commissioner Boyle, do you want to intro this?
I do, just briefly. I read an article, an op-ed in the Omaha World-Herald that was prepared by these two gentlemen, and I found it to be, while it was short, it was very concise and really made great points. So I invited them to come here because they have an interesting perspective on the use of property taxes and the proper living of it. So I want to welcome them, welcome them here. Dr. Bartle, good to see you.
I've got a handout that should be going around, and then we're getting the PowerPoint up, so if you give me just a moment on that, I think it'll be easier to see.
So we go from something very macro to something very micro.
That's just what we needed to hear.
Okay.
Great.
Well, thank you for asking us to be here today. I'm John Bartle. I'm at 310 South 52nd Street in Omaha. We, yeah, thanks. Maybe I can, there we go. So thank you for this opportunity to discuss the issue of property taxes in Nebraska. We both have done a lot of research in our careers, both in Nebraska and other states, but it is important to note that these are our professional opinions, not necessarily those of the University of Nebraska. Just some background on the property tax Nebraska, and there's more detail in the written document that you have. The property tax Nebraska has always been high. It's really, historically, it's always been that way in our history. The current, currently, Nebraska property tax collections are above the national average and higher, significantly higher than the region, almost 31%. And they're also increasing faster than other states. The property tax collections in Nebraska increased by almost, by 29%, whereas the regional average went up about 17%, national increase of 9%. And this chart here may be a little hard to see, but the green is Nebraska, the red is the national average, and the blue is the regional average, the west, north, central region of the U.S. Census Bureau. So, I mean, first of all, the first point, and again, is that Nebraska's higher than both the region and the nation. And second of all, if you look, especially from about 2010, the rate of increase in Nebraska has been faster than for the other, for the region and for the state.
Hello, my name is Craig Maher, 115 South 52nd Street. So as you know, more so than, you know, than most, one of the real challenges that we're facing, you can hear it in legislature today, it's been talked about for a number of years, is the issue of property taxation on ag land. And as the PowerPoint shows, the state has taken several steps over time to attempt to alleviate some of that pressure on the ag portion of your property tax bill, from exemptions of machinery and inventories to a constitutional amendment. that looks at the difference between a market approach versus a, a production approach or a use value approach. And we were hearing that same discussion today. When I was in Wisconsin, had that same argument. And the reality is, when you, when you modify that assessment, it has very little effect in a, a county like Douglas that doesn't have much ag land. It doesn't have much effect on counties throughout Nebraska that are predominantly ag land. So all it really affects are those, those counties and areas that are on the fringes that have a combination of, of use value or of, of ag land and other types of, of property. Oops. Not sure what I did here. So then one of the, one of the dilemmas is how you sort of deal with some of these issues. And there's, there's, there's the question of if we are going to restrict property taxes, there has to be potentially some effect on spending. And the reality is, at the local level, there's a lot of support for local services, particularly when it comes to K-12 and highways. And these are big pieces of the property tax pie. So how do you, how do you deal with some of those, sort of that, that paradox? And couple that with the, one of the areas that I've studied for quite a bit is, is counties in particular are, are in probably the, the least enviable position. Because unlike cities that, that actually have the ability to make decisions on, on service provision, in, in most cases, counties are creatures of the state. So you can only do that which the state tells you to do, and the state can give you some funding for it, but as you, you know much better than I, in many cases, there's a, there's a gap between what you're required to do and the amount of state funding associated with it. So what are some ways, what are some options that perhaps other states have pursued that we, you can pontificate, perhaps advocate for? We've got at least two.
Why don't you do the first one, I'll do the second one.
So one of them is sort of dealing with this, this relationship between what we think are our local services and what we think are state services. And so really think about if the state, if, if it's a state-level service or if it's a, if it's a service like corrections, should counties really be, you know, rely on the property tax to pay for something like that? K-12 education is another good example. In, in Nebraska, we, we fund K-12 education, and I've done a lot of work on this, we fund K-12 education at a rate lower than just about every other state in the nation. In fact, we, so we have this very high property tax reliance, but we also have very little state assistance to the governments, and K-12 is a perfect example. When I, when I was in Wisconsin, the governor advocated for a, a major property tax reduction, 16% in one year. But that took $2 billion of state aid to, to fund K-12 education at a level of two-thirds. I mean, think about what that would look like here in Nebraska.
Another option, I get the less popular option, which is increasing taxes, tax authority. One option is to allow local governments to levy a sales tax. Of course, in Nebraska, cities do that. And, and so it would be possible, of course, to add a county sales tax on top of that, but then you'd have three levels of government taxing sales. So, you know, it's certainly possible, a number of states do it. Another option might be a county tax on either income or wages. Indiana, Maryland, all counties impose that tax. Maryland is kind of interesting. You do your state income tax form, and then you get to the bottom and it says, okay, look up this table, find the, the percentage for your county, the different counties can vary their percentages, and then multiply it by your taxable income and add that to your, add that to your state income tax. And so the state collects it, it all comes into the state, the state then remits it to the counties, and the counties with, with very little administrative work have the access to the income tax base. And then the other four states I mentioned, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Michigan, and Iowa, municipalities and school districts are allowed to use either income or wage taxes. I don't believe counties are applied there. So, so the point is, there are options. None of these are easy. It either involves cutting spending on popular things like roads and schools that Nebraska we've historically supported, or increasing state taxes, or increasing local taxes. But, you know, if you want to increase the property tax, there you are. So in some ways, it's a negative that local governments, counties are creatures of the state, but in certain ways, it's an, it's an advantage. Because the state, to me, is fundamentally responsible for the design of the system. And, and therefore, it's the state's responsibility to work it out. I would say, my personal point of view is, if the state of Nebraska is going to make, do tax relief, it should also at the same time do tax reform. And, and we think that this connection between services that are on the property tax that really shouldn't be on the property tax, now would be a time to start to move in that direction, to move off of them. You know, a very simple example, why are community colleges on the property tax? Partially, at least, that's part of their revenue source. In most states, they're not. It doesn't make a tremendous amount of sense to use a property tax to fund that. And you could say the same thing, I think, also about jails, schools, courts, human services, so forth. And then the other option, of course, is to give local governments more tax authority and to let them decide. So what we've tried to do is just lay out some options for you all to think about. We'd be glad to do further research and come back more on this. So that's, that's our presentation.
And let the record show that two professors have spoken under the 15-minute.
Yeah. Right. That's a miracle.
So, Dr. Bartle, since you're the dean, you had the harder proposal, and for anybody that didn't take your class, what you basically laid out is the scientific word of unfunded mandate.
Yeah. And that's, that's the challenge. I mean, the, the breadth of the unfunded mandates that we have in the state cause this challenge, cause this problem.
Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Morgan.
Well, gentlemen, I really, I really thank you very much. It's concise and really to the point. There are several people here in the audience that have participated with us. Doug Kagan with the Taxpayers for Freedom and so forth, and other groups that have helped us formulate plans. It, it is an interesting concept because when I read the article and I, and you made the presentation today, some of the functions that we, that we have, whether, and particularly in the ju, in the justice system, juvenile and adult, I've always, and commissioners know this, I've, when I go to the state meetings, I sit in the back, and when the governor gets up to speak, I always, particularly with Governor Heinemann, I'd raise my hand and finally he'd say, okay, Mike. And I'd get up and then I'd cup my hands and I'd say, Governor, pay for the justice system. And the whole place would erupt because 60% of our, 60 cents out of every dollar goes to the, you know, the sheriff's office, the court security, the, the judges, and all the things that go with them, and the correction facility, and all those things, the process servers, the whole thing. Justice is such an expensive proposition for us, the county attorney, the public defender. And we don't walk away from it. We've, we do everything we can to fund it adequately because it's such an important part of our democracy to have that available, the prosecution and the defense. We do both. So we're not, not trying to take a walk on that, but we think that it is a state function, not something local. And we do understand that we're an arm of state government, but this total reliance on property taxes is really a burden, and we hear it and we see it constantly. You know, people paying well over $1,000 a month for their property taxes is not unheard of, and even higher in many parts of our county. And it is such a big burden that it does drive people literally out of their homes. So, you know, your concept about, let's take another look at what we're, what we're paying for through property taxes is very welcome. And I hope that Commissioner Morgan and I are co-chair of the budget, and Joe Lorenz is our, our professional bean counter from Chicago that we got from, where did we hire you from, Rostam Parina?
Quaker Oats.
Quaker Oats. So we've got a, really a fellow that really knows his numbers and is very helpful, but your, being able to talk to you and get your ideas and encouragement, I find very useful. So I thank you very much for coming today, and I look forward to talking to you in the future about budget matters and how we may be able to shape things and a strategy for doing that. Thank you.
We'd be very happy to do anything we can. That's our job.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, I too want to thank you very much for being here today and interested at any time to have further discussions with you, with a couple of other commissioners about this. Of course, a county is taking roughly 13% of those tax dollars that you pay. Then you have the city taking maybe 28%. You have the schools with 50-some percent, and so on. And you hit it, well, when you talked about, all we have are the taxes, that 13% approximately, where the city may have $33 million or thereabouts coming in from the restaurant tax and then sales tax and so on. So it makes a pretty good challenge for us, and we used to get funding some years before from the state for our correction facility where we received a million or several million dollars a year. We receive zero now, which Commissioner Boyle has often mentioned. And then we run the health center, which is pretty costly without exception. I mean, I think our cost on that is probably somewhere near $10 million or more to fund that facility. And I don't think the citizens all know of the funding and the responsibilities we have, and you said it quite well when you talked about being a creature of the state and can only do so much. The other thing I say that's not very popular, and I have a difficult time, and I'm being very transparent and candid this morning, when I continually see the amount of money spent in our city on advertising on television by the medical facilities, I'm shocked. I was in a meeting with the commissioners a few years ago, and I said, you know, Annie and I, my wife and I were watching TV and seeing the great commercials of the hospitals makes you just want to check in. And they all laughed about that, but the truth is, I'm not certain that I understand all of that advertising, and I don't think most people that I've talked to realize that their properties are tax exempt, totally. And then when they buy doctors' practices, like 89th and Dodge or 156 and Dodge and other facilities, they own that doctor's building where they own those practices, those become tax exempt buildings also. And they're not, in my opinion, some charitable place where they can go, and I see you smiling a bit about that. But in other states, they are having them have a pilot program payment in lieu of taxes. And I'd love to work with you on that and find out if there's something we can do because we continually see that. And I'd be happy to hear your comments. Your criticism of me for talking about that is welcome, and you won't offend me at all. But it's not a very popular issue because to talk about this or try to get some change in the legislature, you're talking about a very, very powerful lobbying group and someone who's not happy with my comments, and I know that.
Well, I, I'm smiling for, for two reasons. One, I was on the city council for, for five years, and during that time, we had a hospital build a, a branch. It was a heart hospital. And our attorneys told us that that new addition was taxable. And so hospital was exempt, that addition, we thought, was not exempt. It went all the way to the State Supreme Court, and we lost to the, to about $25 million. So part of that is you have to be careful. The second part is, I've actually, I've, I've published and done research on pilots quite, quite extensively. Boston is probably the, the most frequently cited example. And so there is work on that, and if you're interested, I'm more than happy to, to share some of that.
I, I'd like that. Catherine Hall, who is behind me, is an excellent source for all the commissioners and does a lot of good work. We'd love to have that information that you might have, and I'm happy to meet with you in the future to talk about it. But that could be helpful because in our community, and I'm happy to see the great things the hospitals do. I mean, we have tremendous medical facilities here and the additions, and we see the continued progress. But I think we need to try to work together because I know that people that are retiring are having a difficult time staying in their homes, without question. And I think there's some way that maybe we could talk about that a little bit and see if there's something that might be workable that would be helpful. I also think the exemption of sales tax on so many different products could be something that the legislature could also look at because those exemptions are a long list. So I appreciate what you're doing and look forward to talking more about it, and thank you very much for being there this morning.
Yeah, Commissioner Morgan, I think you put your finger on a number of the really important issues, so I think you're thinking about exactly the right, right, right issues.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Thank you for pointing out that. Commissioner Borgen was right. In the, in the years he's been here, he's wanted to be right at least once.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, the timing of this is wonderful because we have the Young Southeast Asian Leadership Initiative here. And, you know, I, I'm going to make a comment to them. Our budget hearings are open to the public. They can come and talk to us and, and have input either during the meeting or later as they mul things over. So what, now back to you, what percentage of, of the property taxes in Nebraska come from farmland or agricultural land?
Oh, boy. Well, I mean, it, I'm, I'm not entirely sure. And more importantly, it varies tremendously by, by region and by county. I mean, there are some regions, there are some counties that are 100%, and then there are some at almost zero.
Yeah, I, I was looking statewide because you did a regional and a national average, and I was looking for that distinction.
We did a study on that for the planning committee, which we'd be glad, the Legislature's Planning Committee, which we'd be glad to make available to you. I think that has that in there.
Would you please?
Yeah, absolutely.
And everything in your slide presentation is in this handout you gave us?
Yes.
Okay. Last is, property tax is valued at January 1st. Some farmland is going to be flooded and not valuable because they can't plant anything on January 1st. What happens to the taxable value of that farm? Pardon?
It will go up.
It goes up? So you're being taxed by the water acre? No. Just, do you know the answer to that?
Well, I mean, I think it's, I mean, at least that first year, it's going to be locked in at that, at that level.
Well, no, I mean, if it's flooded and you cannot plant a crop.
But, but, so here lies the distinction. I mean, we're, we're not taxing ag land on, on production. We're taxing it on the saleable value.
Thank you. That helps. Okay. That, that is an excellent answer that I now understand. Thank you all.
Commissioner Duhon?
Thank you. Yes, Douglas County is the most urbanized county in the state, and therefore, the amount of farmland percentage-wise to our tax base is relatively small. But to the handful of us that are farming, it's a big deal. You know, it, it's a real big deal. And yeah, it doesn't matter if your ground is flooded, if you haven't gotten to harvest last year's crop yet, they don't care. Your taxes are probably going to go up. We went up 20% while we were flooding in 2011. We're going up 20% every year. There has been a huge, your article really caught my attention, and I want to thank Commissioner Boyle for, for inviting you here today. This is, I, I very much appreciate the conversation. The philosophy of- last year's crop yet, they don't care. Your taxes are probably going to go up. We went up twenty percent while we were flooding in 2011. We're going up twenty percent every year. There has been a huge, your article really caught my attention, and I want to thank Commissioner Boyle for inviting you here today. This is, I very much appreciate the conversation. The philosophy of our governor and the state going forward, that there can be no tax shifts, to me says they think the current, the status quo is perfect. I don't think it's perfect. I think we have shifted a huge amount to farmers in recent years with the rise in value of agland. And there, to now freeze that in place, we're over twice the tax of any neighboring state on farmland. This isn't perfect to say that this is the moment in time that we need to freeze because we can't make it any better. Forty-eight percent of our three-legged stools, I understand, is coming from property tax. I mean, it's the legislature's job to try to keep those somewhat equal. Nobody in my mind is serious about addressing these problems yet. We are coming more and more into a service economy, but we don't tax any services, you know, a salesman or woman. Everything that he or she sells is subject to tax. A lawyer, an accountant, absolutely nothing that they sell is subject to any tax. And we wonder why the taxes are getting so high on the things that the salesman is selling. I think there are opportunities here for serious reform. I wish the governor and the legislature were more serious about it. I dread what's going to be happening to farmers because there just aren't enough of us, and we always come out on the short end. And for the governor to now be saying we cannot have any tax shifts, to me, every time he says that, I hear him saying, "The status quo is perfect. We're going to freeze this moment in time in perpetuity." Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Boyle?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought.
Oh, I can let you.
I yield to her.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Thank you for your presentation, and you really hit a lot of hot buttons because these shifts we see all the time down to counties. And it is true that property tax is our source of revenue. We don't get sales tax, we don't get MCN tax, occupation tax, will tax, restaurant tax. We get none of that. I still think that there is possibilities that exist out there to take a piece of the sales tax statewide. If counties could take a portion of that, even if we earmarked it for a specific service, say, mental health, that would help us tremendously because, again, over the course of time, all of those, not only criminal justice, but health and human services have been shifted to the counties, and mental health being one of the largest ones that we have taken on since about 2008 with the closing of our regional centers. And so we struggle to maintain or to even build capacity for those services within our communities with only the property, with only a piece of the property tax pie. So you hit on a lot of, again, hot buttons that we talk about all the time. We just had a conversation, and I know we ticked off some senators down in Lincoln a couple of weeks ago about a district court judge. But again, that's a state function, and yet counties were going to spend upwards of 2.5 million the first year and 1.2 the years after that for that judge, and we have no authority, no say, no nothing over that piece of service that we give to our communities in our counties. And so it's real frustrating. So I'm glad you came. I'm glad you did talk about some of the things that we have talked about, but I think Commissioner Morgan has a good idea to continue looking at the tax exemptions of medical and see what we could do with that, especially as Commissioner Rogers has talked about with the expansion of Medicaid. We do now know it's not going to be implemented until October of 2020, but once that happens, there'll be additional revenues for hospitals, and maybe we can get together and see what we can do a little bit differently than what we have so far. But two other things, the tax exemptions, I don't remember what year it was, but when current city councilman Rich Pauls was a state senator, he introduced legislation to look at tax exemptions because we are pretty heavy on those tax exemptions, and they've been on the books for years and years and years and years. Nothing happened with that. There was also a study of the unfunded mandates that were placed on counties, and I actually asked Senator Crawford just this last tri-county day at the Capitol where that was and what we were going to do about it, and the answer was, well, the state doesn't have any money. And so again, as we watch the legislature at work, there is, again, a constant shift that happens to and onto counties. So I appreciate your time and your presentation. I think we still have a lot of work, but there's opportunity out there. Again, we just have to kind of stay on top of it. So thank you.
Thank you. If I could just add briefly, we didn't get into other taxes such as excise taxes you mentioned, and those are certainly options, too. I know, for example, Cook County, Illinois does a gasoline tax, accounting gasoline tax, on top of the city tax and the state tax. So there are other options for the excise taxes as well.
Cook County is a home rule county.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you, Commissioner. I too want to thank you very much for coming today, and I was really struck by the, it was a very short column, but the story that you wrote was really hit home with me, and that's, I appreciate your coming. I think it's made an impression on the commissioners as well. This is a front burner issue with, I think, a lot of us in this room because the way that we're funding our needs, a lot of our, I should say this, a lot of our operations are discretionary. The health center that we operate at Forty-second and Woolworth is, by and large, at our discretion. We could decide to cut the fifteen million dollar funding out immediately and shut all that down and throw everybody out on the street. It is, in many cases, the place of last resort. It is a terrific place that operates a very important dementia unit, Alzheimer's unit, and the care that's given there is really tops. That's the only way I can put it. I've been there many times, and I've seen what they do. But what I would like to ask you to do is to, and I know you will be, be available to us, to talk to us. I think it's time for us to have a retreat, to go offsite, to be open to the public, but to go offsite and talk about these things all day and try to figure out what it is that we should try to do, how we can put together a coalition. I just read, I believe, yesterday or the day before, that Senator McColister's been working on and believes that he's received the authority to move ahead with a bill to take the windfall from the internet sales taxes that will be coming into the state. And it would be so nice if the counties could have a tiny little piece of that to operate mental health facilities because we are, we have, Commissioner Borgson, how many people do we have waiting to be treated, something, somewhere in the eighties that are waiting to be treated for mental illness, sitting in all sorts of places, emergency rooms and all sorts of places waiting that need mental health care desperately? Sixty percent of the people in our correction facility are suffering from mental illness, suffering from head injuries. When we start looking at the trauma they've had in their lives, those events of watching a cousin get shot in the face and die and all those sorts of things, a mother being beat up, all those things begin to really shape a person's personality, and it's very destructive. And we're not really doing much of anything because we don't have the money to try to stop that sort of thing. There are some really great services, Lutheran Family Services, and there are others, and we're active with Region Six to try to find a way to solve some of these problems, but the money is just not there. So the big secret, that's not a secret, is that we're funding county government with increases in property values. So when, this year, when the property values are raised by the assessor based on valuations, we get that, and it's not a windfall, but we get that windfall to pay salaries, to continue to hire correction facility people, to do all those things that are just really necessary to operate. And we understand we're a child of state government. We just wish that they would share the last name with us. They are not even letting us use their last name. So we're out there by ourselves, hanging in the air. It's always been a terrible affront to me that the county attorney has to pay a filing fee when he files charges against someone who's accused of murder. When he prosecutes someone, he has to pay a filing fee that goes to the state of Nebraska, and there's no chance at all that'll ever be changed because it goes into a fund for judges' pensions. Now, no one's going to try to get any money out of a judge's pension, and I don't have an argument with their pension system, but I don't like it being funded by us having to charge, us paying nearly seven hundred thousand dollars a year out of Douglas County to file charges against people who are accused of crimes. I could go on, obviously, but what I would like to talk to you further about are some options. You know an awful lot about what's out there, and it'd be very useful to do that in a setting where we can discuss this. And as I say, it would be open to the public and offsite, and something we could spend the whole day at, honestly, trying to figure out where we're going because it's really critical. We're slowly reaching a point where I think we're at a breaking point in the next couple of years, maybe three or four years, on what we can fund. I'm not really sure, but some of the facilities that we have on payroll now are approaching a thirty million dollar mark in payroll for various divisions. And when you reach that threshold, then percentages begin to kick in, obviously, they've kicked in already. And so you see percentages having a tremendous impact on the salaries, and pretty soon, they're going to be beyond reach. And it's on a path that we can no longer continue. So I don't know where or when that's going to happen, but we need to do something to try to figure out what we're going to do about it. We're going to have to cut or find another source. So I appreciate your coming today, and I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Borgson on the need to look at the taxes. You know, when I charge someone a legal fee, there's no sales tax. When I pay to have my taxes done, there's no sales tax, the CPA. That's a little ridiculous. When I get my suit clean, there's no sales tax. You know, so it's time we take a look at what's really fair and equitable. So I appreciate your expertise and look forward to having you come and give us some ideas, okay?
Thank you. We're happy to.
Thank you.
We'll be here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor. Thank you.
Keep up the good work, too.
We're moving now to Idame, which is the Burke High School Athletics and Activities Renovation Project. Commissioner Borgson.
Thank, oh, there she is. I was gonna say, I don't think Cindy Key, but she was hiding behind the podium.
I'm a little nervous about my two-hour parking meter.
Oh.
That's okay.
You want me to switch you and you go do that?
No, that's okay.
I think she's only going to take about, not even fifteen minutes.
Fix it.
I would.
As we just got done talking about revenue. Good morning. My name is Cindy Key, 2623 North 125th Circle. I want to speak with the commissioners this morning about a project that we have going on at Burke High School. I am a Burke High alumni, part of a small group of individuals that have taken on the renovation project for the stadium. The purpose of this renovation project is to actually retain the state track meet here in Omaha. For those of you that don't know, Burke High School has been the host of the state track meet since 1971. As far as economic impact to the city or the metro, Omaha metro area, as well as Douglas County and Sarpy County, that brings in, in the last few years, a little over five million dollars total with sales, retail sales, restaurant sales, and hotel stays. This is a two-day event that brings in roughly thirty thousand visitors from around the state of Nebraska and Western Iowa just to see their athletes compete. This project started a couple of years ago when we got word that the NSAA, while they do not officially go out for bids for their state-hosted events, they will entertain ideas if a facility proposes one to them. And the city of Kearney has recently completed their new facilities, and Burke's official contract is up at the end of 2019, the 2019 state track meet. So we would like to retain that here in the city of Omaha. It is a two, well, I won't call them phases, we'll call them zones because they can be done independently of each other. Zone one, we have completed the replacement of 150 diseased trees that have been there for thirty years. We have completed the replacement of the northeast stairs, which is the entrance for the athletes. We are in the process of fundraising for the replacement of the fence that outlines the track itself. Omaha Public Schools has committed to maintaining the facility from the standpoint of they have replaced the track itself in 2017. They replaced the turf in 2018. And the recent bond issue that just passed, we will be replacing the west parking lot, which is currently gravel, with concrete, making it easier for access, and it's a little bit safer. There won't be rocks kicked up on our athletes and judges. Zone two is what I want to talk with you most about today. Zone two is the actual updating of the facilities, which have not been updated since 1967 when the stadium was built. They are, of course, grandfathered in as far as building codes and ADA compliance. However, we don't really want any of our guests falling down the stairs. We want additional restrooms to be made available for handicap individuals. We want additional seating to be made available for handicap individuals. We want the press box to be brought up to building codes because of the increased activity with computers, laptops, wireless activity. The electrical that has to be brought in and reworked makes people a little bit nervous. We'll just put it that way. So zone two is roughly 2.3 million dollars. I am not necessarily asking the commission to give me money. However, we are in the process of applying for a grant through the Visitors Fund, and what we are looking for is support from Douglas County Commissioners Group to, for that particular project as we apply for that grant. Sherwood Foundation has committed a million dollars to zone two, which would be the update of the stadium itself, adding handrails, et cetera. And we have various alumni that have committed almost a half a million dollars also to the project, just on their own accord. And that's really what I wanted to talk with you about today, is just an update to the project, where we're going for it, going with it, and how it affects the county, how it affects the metro Omaha, metro Omaha area, and that we will be applying for a grant, and you should see that application come across here in the next few weeks when your committee starts reviewing them.
And so have you, I don't know the city's application process, or is, if there's an application process for their LB262 funds?
My, my understanding from, I work across the street from Hal Dob, and my understanding from Mr. Dob is that the city has yielded its application process to the county. They do not have a separate application process, from my understanding. That is what we've been told.
No, they still get a portion of the dollars that they distribute, and I don't know how they actually distribute it. Maybe you do, Mr. Chair.
No, it's not, it's, they get the half for the operations and other things, but to Commissioner Borgson's point, I am curious to understand how they're going to play because I've heard something about the project.
Okay.
And I definitely have heard for years the threat that's there and think that, you know, we should do everything we can. But I do, I think that their fund is not given out like ours because theirs go to the operation of the facility and some other pieces.
Okay.
But I do think there's some serious consideration because they have a more flexible and some other resources that they should be playing in this.
And we.
And I don't want to, and I'm gonna just tell you, I don't want to get into the, you know, personally, the lobbying of the funds here because I want to keep the wall intact. But I do think, you know, they need to be some players in this. If OPS's contribution is the maintenance, the upkeep, and the other stuff that's coming in from that degree, I think it's in everybody's interest, and based on that discussion, you know, the revenue that's going to come from the sales tax is tremendously more than what we'll get from the hotel tax. So I just say in that respect that, no, they can't give that fund, but they have other restaurant tax, sales tax, some other things that can be played with.
Yes.
And he knows that.
And the main purpose wasn't to talk about the funding part, it was to alert the community that this was on the table, that we could potentially lose, which has been, again, within our community since 1971 and has generated a good amount of revenue for the surrounding areas. So that was the gist of the presentation. So that was the gist of the presentation. So again, just to build that awareness of something that has been brought to our attention.
Correct.
And I, you know, just to add another point, you know, there are, there's a very robust track community here, and, you know, this would not only be beneficial to the state track meet maintaining, but, you know, I've been to some of these with some other people, and Omaha is very capable of having the regional UST, USATF, and the national USATF for location purposes. So, you know, I definitely think it's a worthy project, and it could open up a whole lot more opportunities for Omaha and amateur athletics, which we've been trying to get at.
Sure.
So, thank you, and if you do have a ticket, let me know.
Okay. Thank you very much. It was, it was an informational one, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so.
Thank you.
And please let me know my contact information is in there if you do have any additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to item C, Region Six Behavioral Health Update, and on the stepping up initiative. Commissioner Borges?
Yes, I have with us today, thank you, Mr. Chair, our Regional Program Administrator, Patty Djerjovic, and our stepping up coordinator, Vicky Maka, who are going to give updates. There's been a lot of talk lately about mental health and what we're providing or what we're not providing, and I wanted to make sure that the board knew exactly what was going on within the region and what we're providing and how we're providing it. And then Vicky giving an update on the stepping up initiative that was started here a couple of years ago. It's a national program that the National Association of Counties started, and we're participating in it, and Vicky will give an update on lots of stuff that's going on there within Douglas County and the region. Patty? Go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Happy to be here today. You have a packet of information. There's a good number of materials in that packet. Our intent is not to go through everything today. I've got a couple documents that I would like to briefly run through with you, and then I will turn it over to Vicky to spend the rest of the time on the stepping up initiative. Okay, so I just want to give a little bit of history, it may be helpful for you. The behavioral health regions came into existence in the mid-1970s. The legislature felt like local control was the best way to approach mental health services, given the diverse population and needs of the state. So that's where it was created, and six regions were organized across the state of Nebraska. So then in 1977, additional funding was included to add substance use services as well. The other piece of significant legislation was in 2004, LB1083. That really was the effort to downsize the state regional centers and shift dollars from those operations to the regions. So we planned on how we would better serve individuals here in our community instead of at the state regional center level. I will just, my comment on that is that we did not get enough funding to be able to develop all the services that we felt were necessary. That legislation also confirmed, again, the authority of the regions, the boards. There is a matching fund requirement that the county contributes, and then all the powers and duties of the regional behavioral health authorities. That next slide then shows the state. You can see how it's divided up with the regions. We are the smallest region in geographic size, but we have the largest percentage of the population here in Region Six. We do have statutory responsibility, so I've listed that here for you. I just want to highlight, you know, our primary responsibilities about developing and coordinating a system of publicly-funded behavioral health services, coordinating, planning for those services, looking at local needs and how we can best address those. We do a significant amount of monitoring. We have contracts with community-based organizations to deliver the services and do a significant amount of monitoring of those services that are delivered through those contracts. In terms of funding, we are a capitated system, so we're different than Medicaid. So what is appropriated to the regions annually through the legislature, that's the total amount of dollars that we have to work with. So federal and state funds are appropriated through that process, and then we enter into a contract with the Division of Behavioral Health, that's in Health and Human Services at the state level, to access those dollars based on a plan that we've submitted. And then we certify that matching funds are collected from the five counties in the region. So the appropriation from the legislature goes to the Division of Behavioral Health, and a portion of that then goes into contracts with the six regional behavioral health authorities. We use those funds to support treatment, rehabilitation, and prevention activities for the indigent, uninsured, and underserved populations. So there is clinical and financial eligibility in order to access the services that we contract with, with those community-based organizations. I've listed our FY19 funding there, so you get a sense as to what we're working with. And just by way of context...
What are you reading from? There's so much stuff here. I can't see the starters. Is it in that?
It is in that one, yes.
In this one?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's all right.
I just lost my place and was trying to read it.
That's okay.
Page five.
I'm on page five, yes.
Okay, that helps. Page five, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
Sorry.
That's all right. Just to give you some context, the legislature appropriates $99.5 million to community-based aid. Then the division takes 83 million of that and puts that into contracts with the six regional behavioral health authorities. So there you can see the funding that is appropriated. All but the county matching funds are coming through that state appropriation that we receive. The following pages, I'm not going to go through those in your packet there, but I've listed the service organizations and the services that we contract with that are located in Douglas County. So there's three more pages there that you may find of interest. It gives you a sense as to the different organizations in our community that we partner with. Okay, I'm going to switch gears here quickly. Any questions at this point that I can?
Yes, on a per capita basis, how do we compare to the other regions?
The formula that's used to distribute the money across the six regions is based on population and income. So we lose a little bit on the income side. So per capita, we would have less than, when we look at dollars per capita, we would come out a little bit less than some of the other regions based on that income factor that's also used to calculate that.
Okay, and who created the formula, do you know?
It was the regions and the Division of Behavioral Health, a number of years ago, reached an agreement on how best to divide up those dollars.
Since it was a number of years ago, does the formula need to be updated?
Well, I would like to see it updated.
So would I, yeah.
But, you know, then you get into some, you know, kind of push and pull.
I know, it gets very political.
It is, and without new dollars coming in, we would be taking dollars away from another region who has those invested in services. So that's where it's difficult.
I realize that. I just wanted to delve into it.
Thank you. Good question.
Sarpy County is talking about building a mental health facility. I don't know whether they're going to be able to do that or not, the costs are so high. We're talking through this talk about possibility of whether it ever happens or not, who knows, but I think tearing down the Douglas County Youth Center and building a mental health facility there, sponsored by wealthy people, which would be great, UNMC and CHI and so forth. I don't know, are you the person that we should talk to, Patty, or is it Vicky, that talks about the care of the mentally ill? And what do we do about it? Because we're, we have 60%, as I said earlier, 60% of the people, several hundred, who are in our jail, are suffering from mental illness of one sort or another, and some very serious illness. We had a, well, I'm not going to go into detail because there's a lawsuit involved, but in any event, what's the answer to caring for the mentally ill in our region, or at least in Douglas County? Should we do this regionally? What's the deal? What should we do?
Well, we certainly, and this, we'll get to some of Vicky's conversation with you all in a little bit, but we recognize that we, in the behavioral health system, have gaps. We know that. And, you know, part of our challenge is the dollars in the capitated system that we have to work with. So in order to shift into creating some different service or new service, we will have to take money away from something else. Those are the tough decisions that we have to make.
Well, that just doesn't work at all. Just, it really, we can't do that. I mean, I know what you're saying, because funds are limited, but we need to figure out, I mean, do we close down all the treasurer's offices and take that money and use that for mental illness? I don't know. I mean, do we stop, shut down the Douglas County Health Center and take that money and use that? Is it more a priority to work with the mentally ill than it is the elderly? I don't know. That's where we are. I mean, that just doesn't work at all.
Those are tough policy, those are tough policy questions.
Well, and it's also a cheap legislature. You know, the legislature's always taking care of themselves, to be honest with you. I don't know what's the matter with them.
Yeah.
They make me so upset. You know, they, it's very aggravating to have these responsibilities and then being told to do, and we don't have the money. What about Community Alliance? I know you have contracts with them. They seem to be performing pretty well and doing a lot of good things. I stopped by and visited them about two months ago and went through and talked to them about what they're doing, and it's really, I'm very impressed. I saw people coming and going who are being treated. Is that what we should be doing, or should we be investing more in people like Community Alliance?
I do think there's value in community-based services and being able to help individuals, hopefully, avoid a crisis. And that's potentially when they come in contact with law enforcement, and then potentially they may go to jail because of that. If we can help people be stable with community services, I think that's probably the best answer and probably the most cost-effective way of helping individuals in the community.
Well, it really seems like it to me, because it's already there, and there probably are others. I rely on Commissioner Borgerson and others who are more familiar with this subject, but it seems like we ought to be using established organizations to try to treat people and to maybe even expand their services, something of that nature, so. But I do appreciate the work that Region Six does. You're doing a terrific job, Patty. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks for this. It's great. Really good overview. We have these discussions all the time when we meet as trustees over the health center relative to what kind of services we're providing or not providing, particularly in the area of behavioral health. And the question that always comes up relative to Douglas County is, do we have any long-term mental health care beds in Douglas County? And the answer is no. So my question to you is, do we have any long-term mental health care beds in Region Six?
The answer is no, we don't. And back when we did, when 1083 was passed and we were doing our planning on how best to serve people in the community, the long-term care needs of individuals came up. And we were told by the state, and by that I mean the Division of Behavioral Health, don't worry about it, we'll take care of it. And that was how many years ago? We're still waiting. It's my understanding that there is a Medicaid service definition, so I would expect that Medicaid should participate in helping to fund this. I would hate to see it fall solely on the county to do that when Medicaid, who has responsibility for individuals, should be able to contribute towards that, so.
So, other...
Can you explain, Patty, what a Medicaid service definition is, just before you continue?
It is, it is really the basis for how anybody, whether it's a community provider or anybody, has to deliver a service. So it will identify staffing patterns, how many staff you have to have, at what discipline, kind of all the licensing requirements. So it's very specific on how a provider has to deliver a service in order to be eligible for reimbursement in that system.
Thanks. Based on this current system that you described, the dead result is, we don't provide any of these services that we just talked about, long-term mental health care beds, to our citizens in Region Six. Zero, none, right?
Correct. There is, that does not exist.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cora? Services for people under 18. Does Region Six provide any services in that area?
We do pay for services for youth. There is far fewer services that we pay for youth, only because youth typically have other funding sources to pay for those services, commercial insurance, CHIP, and other sources. So...
CHIP is?
That's the Medicaid piece of, yeah, funding.
Well, explain it anyways for people.
Children's Health Insurance Program.
Yeah.
Children's Health Insurance Program, thank you. Because I, you know, if we can stem some of these issues when they're young, it'd benefit us in years later, but it costs money upfront. Are there any improvements we can make in serving the youth?
I think it would, I would love to be able to do more prevention and early intervention activities. I do think that's the key to helping to address issues and resolve issues when folks are younger, so that they don't continue to get worse, and then we see them in our adult system.
Right.
So I think that's key. I think, again, with that capitated system, we're going...
By the way, I looked out capitated because I didn't know what it was.
Oh, okay.
So some people, again, may not know what it means.
Okay. It means there is a set amount of money that we have available and...
A predetermined amount per service and per person, yes. So, but getting back to the youth, the family matters, the social service aspect of it, family, we should have a family court. We really should. But what are the guidelines Region Six money can be used? And are they included in this brochure?
Oh, I probably don't have a great deal of detail on that, but certainly could follow up.
Could you email me, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No other questions at the moment?
You can continue, Patty. No other questions.
Okay. So the next set of information in your packet is looking at some data, and I'll go through this pretty quickly, but this is from FY17, and I just want to explain the data system. It's got some limitations. The state implemented a new system a couple of years ago, and it's still being worked on to improve. It's better than what we had prior to that, but it still has some limitations that we work with. One of the things you'll see throughout this document is the term encounters. So a lot of the data that's presented here is based on an episode of care, so it's duplicated. So if an individual was served in two different kinds of services, the numbers are going to be included for both of those encounters. So I just want you to be aware of that. So this first page, you can see the number of Douglas County residents served in FY17 is 8,166, and there were 15,493 encounters. So you can see pretty easily that individuals, there are individuals who access more than one service during the fiscal year. To the, to the right then here is the fiscal year, it shows the county match that you have contributed. And we have estimated, based on the information that we have available to us on expenditures, what was the return on that investment. So you have invested in FY17, I'll just look at that one, about 1.2 million, and based on the services that residents used, a little over $20 million in services were received as a result of that. Down below here then is some additional demographic information. We've got race and ethnicity down here. I would just call to your attention, 69% of the encounters, served in that system, white residents, 19% black, African-American, and 4% American Indian, Alaska Native. And then Hispanic, 7% of those served. I'm going to, oop, I went too fast there. The next page in that packet looks at an age breakdown. 51% fell within that 25 to 44-year-old category, and then another 32%, 45 to 64-years-old. And then you can see a breakdown by gender, too, off to the right of that. The insurance status, 74% were uninsured, so you may remember that that's really the population that we are targeting for... So, you may remember that that's really the population that we are targeting for use of our dollars. Those that don't have insurance can't afford insurance. The employment status, 49% are unemployed. And 47, at the bottom of the page, 47% lived in their own private residence. That following page then identifies some additional information out of the data system. I just would call your attention to that bottom bubble there. 74% had an annual gross income, household income of $10,000 or less. So, it truly is an indigent population that is able to access services based on the funding that we provide to community providers. Then the bottom half of that page shows the top services that were provided to the Douglas County residents. So, you can see the top few outpatient services, medication management, civil protective custody, on down the line. And then we follow that in this document with a complete listing of all of the services that Douglas County residents accessed during the fiscal year. So, you can see there's a significant range there of services that are provided through that network of community-based providers that your residents had access to. I would just, one more brief comment, and then I'm going to turn it over to Vicki. But, you know, we were talking about Medicaid expansion. We just now got some information about that. I did want you to know that the governor's budget and the Appropriation Committee's preliminary recommendations have a cut to the behavioral health region's budgets. So, 1.885 million next fiscal year, and then it's up to 4.6 million in the second year of the biennium. This very much concerns us. I testified last week at the Appropriations Committee, and at that time, we didn't have information available about Medicaid expansion, other than we didn't have any idea when it was going to go into effect. So, I can tell you that cuts to our system prior to that Medicaid expansion operating are going to directly impact capacity that's available for folks. It will just be fewer dollars that are out there in services in the system. So, I just wanted to mention that. I also included in your packet, on the right-hand side there, it's a report that the Nebraska, the regional administrators put together about projected impact from Medicaid expansion on our system. So, with that, I will pause and see if there's any other questions. No? Done? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Vicki Maka, and I'm the Director of Criminal Justice and Behavioral Health Initiatives with Region Six Behavioral Healthcare. And I am excited to talk to you about the Stepping Up Initiative. The Stepping Up Initiative is a national initiative that was launched in May of 2015. It's a collaboration between the National Association of Counties, NACO, the Council of State Governments Justice Center, and the APAF. The real purpose of Stepping Up is to provide counties with technical assistance to help them develop a systems-level, data-driven plan to reduce the number of people who are incarcerated in county jails. So, why the need for Stepping Up? As you know, people that have a serious mental illness are two times as more likely to be homeless. They're three times more likely to have a co-occurring substance abuse disorder. They're three times more likely to be injured due to an altercation, and they are four times more likely to have a history of trauma. The Stepping Up framework is really, there's two parts to the framework. The first part of the framework is the six questions. And those six questions are, number one, is our leadership committed? And while I won't answer all of these, I will tell you that the answer to question number one is yes. Douglas County has passed a resolution in full support of the Stepping Up Initiative. So, with respect to question number one, we are right on track. The second question is, do we conduct timely screening and assessments of people going into jail? Do we have baseline data? Number four, have we conducted a comprehensive process analysis? And I will talk to you more about the answer to question number four in just a bit. Number five, have we prioritized policy practice and funding? And number six is, do we track progress? So, the second part of the Stepping Up framework is the four key measures. And one of the things that I love about the framework is it's very, very focused. We want to reduce the number of people who have a mental illness that are booked into jail. We want to shorten the average length of stay for those people. We want to increase the percentage of connection to care or connection to treatment before they re-enter the community, and we want to lower rates of recidivism. Those are the four measures that we are focused on. In order to move and make progress forward with those goals, you have to have a team, and that is part of the framework as well. In Douglas County, we have assembled a really great team of people that are coming together every month and meeting. We have people from Corrections. We have folks from the Douglas County Administration, the County Attorney's Office, Public Defender, the Sheriff, OPD, probation, the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center, and Region Six. The Stepping Up Initiative would not work without a committed group of team members. And I can tell you, this group has been very open and honest about the challenges. And they've also put a lot of energy into coming up with the strategies to help us meet those four outcome measures. So, what we have done as a group is we've put together a work plan, which, the work plan that I'll go over with you is a very dynamic, fluid document. It changes every month. It helps us stay focused. It holds us accountable. And with it is a corresponding data report that I didn't bring today, but I can certainly share with you in the future. The data report gives us an update on how we're doing with the four key measures. And then with each of the four key measures, there are sub-measures that we look at as well. So, the first part of the work plan is measure number one, which is to reduce the number of people with a serious mental illness who are booked into jail. And you can see that these strategies all have someone responsible to lead the work. We usually have a target date, a completion date, and then any notes. So, this first goal is really about pre-booking jail diversion. So, before these folks even get to jail, what can we do to reduce the number of people that are entering jail with a mental illness? This is the prevention part of the framework. So, we're looking at crisis intervention training for law enforcement and 911. We're looking at mental health first aid, and we're looking at how often is mobile crisis response being utilized by law enforcement. This is, these strategies are really, really important because the best thing we can do is to prevent these people from getting into jail in the first place because once they're booked into jail and they're on that criminal justice journey, the work gets a lot harder to get them out of that system. So, we are spending a lot of time and looking at a lot of data to inform us about how we're doing with this first outcome measure. The second outcome measure is to shorten the average length of stay for people who have a serious mental illness that are in jail. We, again, are looking at some data, but also some mapping out of processes. These are strategies that happen after someone's booked into jail. And I would just really want to draw your attention to number six. We are very, very excited that Nebraska is one of seven states that has been awarded a St. Seguin Center Learning Collaborative Technical Assistance Grant. And while there's no real money with this grant, we will, we have pulled together, the state has a leadership team, and they have identified Douglas County and Lancaster County to be their two local counties to work on this learning collaborative with them. So, we will be having federal experts in the area of competency to stand trial and competency restoration that we'll be working with. We have a local team of Douglas County folks that will be a part of this learning collaborative. And what we're really trying to do is to look at, what are the best practices that other states have used to reduce the amount of time that someone is sitting waiting in jail, waiting to go to the Lincoln Regional Center to have their competency evaluation or their competency restoration treatment? So, very excited about that. Again, another, that's a strategy that will help reduce the average length of time that people are staying in jail. The third goal is to increase the percentage of connection to care for people with SMI who are in jail. The strategy that, one of the strategies is, number one, that I'm really excited about, we are in the process of developing a clinical review team who is going to really review and staff and have a, kind of do a deep dive into who are the folks that are really, really complicated, have complicated behavioral health needs, and to look at, what have we missed? Why are these folks continuing to come back into jail? And how do we set up a plan, a re-entry plan, that will prevent them from going back into jail? So, we're very excited to get that strategy going. And then the last goal is, number four, to lower the rates of recidivism. Strategy number three, Develop Familiar Faces Project. This is really tied to strategy number, let me see where it is. Number four. Three and four are very connected. These strategies, what we're looking at is, again, the familiar faces. We're, Douglas County Corrections has submitted the top 15 people who are in and out of the jail most frequently. We are then looking at those names against our behavioral health data to see, have we served them? When did we serve them? What service did they receive? And again, to do that deep dive and to figure out, what are we missing? So, one of the challenges we've had with that in the past is we're not able to share information because of either HIPAA or 42CFSR. So, we've put together an information sharing group that will work through those barriers with us so that we're really able to do that deep dive with people. So, those are the four goals. You have an overview of some of the strategies that we're working on. And I would also like to say just kudos to Mike Myers at the Douglas County Jail and his leadership team. They have been wonderful to work with, very, very committed to this project. And I think in the last year, we've come a long way. The next slide is the Sequential Intercept Model. This is really part of answering the question to number four. Have you conducted a comprehensive process analysis of your service array? In November of 2017, Region Six contracted with Policy Research Associates, who came into Omaha and met with about 50 folks from the Douglas County area. And we walked through each of the intercepts. This process, what we're really, what we did is, we looked at, how do people with a mental illness come into contact with the criminal justice system in each of these different five intercepts? And at each of those intercepts, what are the resources we have? What are the gaps? And what is the plan we're going to do to kind of shore up those gaps? Many of the, well, I'll show you the next page. So, as a part of the sequential intercept model, what participants do is we vote on the top 15, 16 items that we want to prioritize. So, you can see that the 16 items that were voted on, the top six are generally the ones that we're focused on. And four of the six sequential intercept model strategies are included in the work plan that I've shared with you. So, that was a really great exercise that we walked through in November of 2017. And then I also want to talk to you about a great opportunity. Nebraska will be having our first annual Stepping Up Summit in April 17. That will be in Lincoln, and it's sponsored by Nebraska NACO and Janssen Pharmaceuticals. The keynote speaker is an amazing speaker, Judge Stephen Lifeman, who has done some amazing work in Dade County, Florida, on reducing the number of people who have a mental illness that are in jail. And I am happy to take any questions you might have about Stepping Up.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. How long has Stepping Up been going on here?
I was hired in October of 2017.
And the funding for Stepping Up, what, how much is the annual budget of Stepping Up? If you know.
I would say there is no budget, other than my salary.
Okay. And is that from Region Six? I think you mentioned initially there might have been some grant funds involved here in funding this? It's all Region Six money?
Mm-hmm. It is.
Okay. Since that time, since the initiation of it, have the numbers of the individuals that we're talking about here, I think you referenced both Corrections and the Youth Center. Or was it just...
Just adult population.
Just adults. Okay. So, have those numbers in incarceration at the Douglas County Correction Center gone down?
I would say the number of people who have a mental illness who are incarcerated, that number has not gone down at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Craft?
Yes. This first annual Nebraska Stepping Up Summit, who can attend that?
Anyone.
Is there a charge to it?
There is a fee. I think it's $35.
Okay.
And registration is on the Nebraska NACO website.
Okay. And for people in the audience who might want to go, NACO is Nebraska Association of County Officials.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. And where in Lincoln is it going to be held?
That I don't know for sure.
Okay. I had a question for Amber, and now I can't remember it. Okay. So, I'll stop.
Yes, I want to ask, maybe I missed this, but do you have a relationship with the homeless shelters? The reason I ask is that Mary Ann and I went over, and I think others too, went over, and when Mark Foxall was head of Corrections, and we opened up a relationship between Sienna Frances House because so many people who end up there end up at our place back and forth and trying to figure out some permanent solutions for them, at least something better than what they have.
Yes.
So, I was just curious whether you've done that. One of the things that I get pretty concerned about, and it's not only in the adult system, but in the juvenile system as well, but it is particularly, well, it doesn't make any difference. They're both problems. Sometimes the terms of probation, you know, for people who are homeless or who really don't have a lot of order in their life to begin with, it's very difficult to avoid some of the terms or to fulfill the terms of probation. And even it's something as simple as not associating with someone who's not of good character or whatever. I really am concerned about what happens when someone violates probation because then it starts to spiral down that leads to a lot of other things, incarceration, and particularly the mentally ill. Do you have any thoughts on that, or do you work with judges on any of these things? Or what's the story? Do you have any information?
Well, one of the things that we have been talking about is to really, on page 11, I guess, is to work with probation on a couple of strategies, to really look at number five, on page 11, number five, to explore the feasibility of collecting data on the percentage of people who have an SMI who are charged with a new criminal offense while they're on community supervision. I think that is a piece of work we need to do, is to really understand who those folks are and what were those violations. But certainly, that is contributing to the increase in population at the jail.
Okay. Thanks.
You want to add something?
I did. In response to Commissioner Kavanaugh's question about, has the number changed going into the jail system? I'd say not yet. You know, there's a significant amount of groundwork that has to be laid in order to get multiple systems to change. It isn't just behavioral health. It's jail. It's the county attorney. It's the public defender, probation. You know, we are asking them to come to the table and look at potentially changing how they do business. So, it is, we are not there yet, I guess, is the point I wanted to make.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Commissioner Borgson and Commissioner Craft?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Patty, for adding that because I was going to say the same thing, that, again, you know, doing the sequential intercept modeling process was really... process was really huge. Commissioner Boyle and I, back in 2015, when we actually passed the resolution for Stepping Up, actually got Corrections and the Community Mental Health Center together to start that mapping. And once we hired, or once we did the intercept model, and saw how big this was, and in, I mean, it's complicated, as Patty said, there's all kinds of system peoples involved, so you just can't walk into the jail and snap your finger and reduce the people with mental illness in your jail. So, thus, with Vicki coordinating and be able, and being able to stay on task with the departments and offices that we need to, to build our plan on how we are going to reduce it, is key. And just for the work that we've done since Vicki's been here, has been phenomenal in terms of how much farther we are than when we just tried to get together every, I don't even know if it was a regular meeting, but every once in a while to talk about it. And so, this is building our plan and building those, finding out what those issues are that are keeping those people, well, getting them into the jail, and then if they're in the jail, keeping them, how do we get them out and move through the process much faster? So, they're definitely worth the energy that we're putting into this.
And I would just add to that, that most of the last year, our efforts have really focused on baseline data collection, which is at the core of this framework. Without having that baseline data, we'll never know if we're making a difference. And so, defining each of those measures, so how do you define serious mental illness? Is it a mental health disorder? Is it severe and persistent mental illness? Is it just serious mental illness? They all have different definitions, and we had to come together as a team and work through those definitions for each of the measures. That takes time to do, so.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yeah. Amber, I don't know if you'll be able to answer my questions, but will you come up, please? On this particular chart, which is also in the book, I don't remember which page, but reduce the number of people with SMI booked into jail. Is there a time of day or night where more mentally ill people are booked into jail?
Without tracking it, I would be unsure, but my instinct is no. There's no particular time.
And is there a relationship as to when they might get their welfare check, or social security check, and when that check runs out, and then not being able to include medicine or something? Is there a relationship between that?
Yeah. Do you have the information on when those benefits are discontinued? There is.
There is, okay. I thought there would be. That was my question. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vicki. There's no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
With that, we'll go on to committee discussions and actions. Letter A is the Finance Committee, and the Budget Board, Commissioner Morgan says as presented. We'll go on, item C, item, item C, Child New Services, item one. Commissioner Boyle, as, wants to reschedule this till probation can be here. They had a conflict, so we will work to put that on later in the month. And with that, we'll go to item E, which is the Criminal Justice Committee, and item one is a presentation by Lori Elkin of the United Way, and Ron Murtaugh, the clerk of the Douglas County Courts regarding the offender to work program pilot. Commissioner Boyle, do you want to say anything?
Yes. They've been working diligently on this program, and they, I think they have some good news to report, and I'd like to ask them to go ahead and proceed. They've really, really been hard at it, and I appreciate it very much. Lori and Ron?
Good morning. I'm Lori Elkin with United Way of the Midlands. My address is 14809 DK Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154.
Ron Murtaugh, clerk of the county court, 15105 Rock Creek Drive. We come before you, just to recap, if you remember when Judge Kime and I came before you, LB 259 was just being passed, May of 2017. That has a lot of components to it that we're not going to get into. The only component that we really wanted to get into, and we've asked Amber to come out as well, because it impacts Corrections, is LB 259 addresses the ability to pay fines and costs, to try and find alternative ways to satisfy any type of court cases in a, in a non, without incarcerating those people. So, up until that 2017, Douglas County has always been at the leading edge of problem-solving those things. Our bench was quick to do time payments, send out text messages for reminder of time payments. They stood up the OWP program, which stands for the Offender Work Program. And when I handed off to Lori and Amber, you're going to hear two different things. You're going to hear the traditional offender work program, the traditional OWP, and then we call it the OWP, the United Way option. And what happened was, OWP is a Monday through Friday, people have to commit to six to eight hours straight, to be able to fulfill that. They work, they get $150 per day towards their fines. Well, through LB 259 and conversations with United Way and Corrections, we recognize that there are a lot of people that hold down full-time jobs, two jobs, and they can't get away Monday through Friday, eight to four, without jeopardizing their current job. So, in our discussions and partnership between the bench, our public-private partnerships, we reached out to United Way, since they oversee the community, the community hours, and to see if they would expand their oversight or assistance in managing an OWP version that allows defendants more flexibility in working off their fines. So, with that, I'll turn over to Lori.
Thank you, Ron. Just kind of what he summed it up, originally, probably about a year ago, we came to when we were asking for a grant, to incorporate the OWP pilot program, to help reduce the individuals that are being incarcerated. Part of that, we've kind of expanded that in the last couple of months, to include individuals that are going in front of a judge, that are not able to pay off court fees and fines, to also add this potential of coming to us to work off those court fees and fines, instead of going through the traditional OWP pilot program, or also being incarcerated. In the last couple of months, when this started up, we have created kind of cards, which I believe that you have an example of, option one and option two. Option one is the traditional OWP pilot program, which Ron had talked about, and I know that either Amber or Debbie can speak about it. But also, the other option two is coming to us, meaning United Way of the Midlands. I can tell you that individuals that have come to us love the idea, kind of Ron has mentioned that if they have, can't leave work, it's a Monday through Friday job, eight to five, they don't have daycare needs, they can't be incarcerated over the weekend, to pay off these fines, they like this other option, this other alternative, to pay off the fines, and it's just a relief for them. So, more or less, with this program, it's just an extension of currently what we're doing, just to help alleviate the individuals that are being incarcerated. So, if you have any further questions for me, or if you have any questions either for Amber, or for Debbie from Douglas County?
Amber, if you can come down, but I think Lori, I think I asked you all a question. Does, can this in the long run, is this first, this first year or second year?
This is, this is a first year, a first year starting on, it started July 1st of 2018.
Okay. Because my question to you all was, as this pilot goes, could this be used as a way to help relieve some of the pretrial pressure? Or is that something, since you got a year, when I asked before, you were trying to get through the model, I guess my thought was, was it, it seems like it's got some potential to play into trying to be used as a way to get at the fact that somebody can't pay bail. Can I ask you now, in the second year, now that you got a grip on it, is there some way to see if that can play in the process? Because I know you had to talk through the judges on it, but is there a way to work that through?
Yeah. Well, and this type of arrangement is really for sentenced individuals. It's in lieu of paying their fines that have already, they've already been sentenced to, so it's not necessarily appropriate for the pretrial population that has not yet been sent.
Got it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I was just talking to Marcos to see if he knew, and he does know, the status of Senator's, Senator Chambers' bill on bail, and the board unanimously supported that, and it's still in committee. But is there any, any way that you can be involved in that? I mean, I'd like to find a way to, you're just so successful at what you do, that I'd like to find a way to hook that up into, and run it through United Way, some way for people to get out of jail without having to pay bail, I mean, so they would show up. And it's, it's really such a burden, particularly undue burden, I think, on the poor. They're the ones who sit in jail on a, we've had it happen so many times, and so often. They're in jail because they can't make even the smallest of bail. And is there any way that you could see, and I'd like to ask you to think about it, at least, some way that you could figure out a way to get in there and serve as a conduit to people who can't make bail, to get them out?
I think there could be talk about that, but again, this is kind of like the pilot program. We're just trying to extend it out, just to kind of get feelers, and see if this is going to be beneficial, not discouraging that conversation. And again, this is something that you and I can talk to, and, you know, bring Debbie and Amber in, definitely into that conversation, to see what that looks like.
That'd be great, if you could, because I think you're, it's something that seems to be right up your alley. I mean, you do a really good job of, of people getting diverted into the, into your process, and I think it's very successful.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. I believe, I forgot who said it, that this was not appropriate for pretrial. Is it not appropriate because of current legislation, because of the way the program's set up?
Well, the concept of pretrial is that they are, they're pre-adjudicated individuals, people that have not been sentenced, and this program is designed to allow people to work off their fines, so a sentence that they've already been given, in lieu of sitting in jail.
That kind of ties in with what Commissioner Boyle was saying. You know, if we could find a way to adapt it legally, with the judges sentencing them, not sentencing, they haven't seen a judge yet to set bail, have they?
Who, pretrial?
Yeah.
Yeah. They do see a judge to have their bail set while they're on pretrial status.
Okay. So, maybe in lieu of bail, they could be subjected to this.
Yeah, and that, we would certainly entertain that conversation. That's definitely something for us to explore.
Thank you.
Commissioner Borg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, or, maybe not now, since it just started, if I'm understanding right, this pilot, the extension piece of what we were doing, to now open it to other hours for folks that work full-time, started July 1 of 2018, correct?
Correct. That's the OWP pilot program that we presented, to give alternatives to individuals, instead of spending time in jail, or doing the traditional OWP pilot program, since I work with nonprofit agencies within the community, I have a wide range of better opportunities, nights, weekends, to accommodate those individuals.
Right. So, are you, can you give us how many more we have been able to serve through the pilot, and what the cost was or is to serve those?
Through the add-on, through going through the course, or, since we, since I started following them, and probably in the last two months, I've received 14 referrals from judges through the pilot program. I've had three that have completed, two successfully. The other one did not contact me within the required amount of times. Once they sign up for this part of participating in the OWP pilot program, they have to contact me within 24 hours. The other remaining individuals are in the process of, right now, of completing their hours.
So, since July 1, 14?
No, 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 no. I apologize. So, I was talking about the individuals that are being referred through the course, like through the judges, the extension of it. So, you're talking about the traditional OWP that started July 1?
No, I guess I misunderstood. I thought you, the extension of the traditional program started, the pilot started July 1.
That's the traditional OWP. The extension, working with the judges, that started probably about, maybe January 1st or so, just to get, creating the cards, getting that information out to the judges.
Of this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. And then the, because we provided more dollars to United Way to increase, or make this, or do this pilot.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
And that was how much?
The additional for the grant was 81.4. And I believe in January, I sent an email to everyone, kind of a breakdown of those numbers, but I can definitely send a revision of those.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And just to, just to let the commissioners know that the, just to clarify, that the judges don't sentence anybody to OWP. They say, here's your fine. You can either pay the fine, you can go to, we offer OWP, traditional, OWP, United Way, where you have more flexibility, or sit it out in jail. So, it's up to the defendant to, to embrace which one works best for them. And then up, and then at the very beginning, I know that Amber, we all talked about how many people they would anticipate, so they really opened that up. And now, we're starting to hand cards out at the cashiering office, those two-sided cards, because quite honestly, I don't think it was being marketed to its full potential. Now, it's being marketed. So, I think that's where you're going to see the increase and return on your investment.
Commissioner Boyle.
Murtaugh, I don't know if I heard you correctly, but is there a pretty good, a pretty good degree of support with the county judges for this program, pretty much, it looks like there is, but is that the case?
Oh, yes. Huge, huge support on the bench, not only from putting in place respectable bonds, not atrocious bonds, but also fines, you'll see lower fines. Right now, we, our judges have increased their, their appreciation for letting people serve, give credit for time served, when somebody's arrested in another county. For instance, we had somebody that had a warrant for their arrest here. They got arrested in Columbus.
Yeah.
They owed $200. Our judges let them do time served in Columbus, versus putting a deputy on the road, going up to Columbus, bringing them back, put them in Corrections here. So, I can't share enough how much they, the judges embrace the vision of the county board, and are doing everything they can to balance that going forward.
You know, I thought that was the case, and I, and I, I think I need to, well, you won't correct me if I'm wrong, but I really think I need to lay this, the success at your doorstep, because I know that you're a big fan of this, it makes a great deal of good sense, and I know Lori's been cooperating as well. It's really a, this is a real success story, and I'm really happy about it. And I'm always concerned about, and I asked this question at a seminar in Washington recently, where they were talking about doing away with bail, and I asked, how do you, how do you protect judges? Because a judge, you know, who lets someone else on bail, or does, takes some act that's reasonably benevolent, sometimes, you know, you can have the Dukakis effect, something goes wrong, goes off the rails. And I'm always concerned about making sure our judges are protected, that are not exposed to undue, you know, if something goes off the rails, that they are not criticized unduly and unfairly, because those things happen. And I don't think that situation will occur with what you're doing, but I always have that in the back of my mind, because it, to me, it's kind of key to the success of these programs, making sure that we aren't frankly endangering judges to undue criticism for something that happens. So, I really appreciate what you're doing, and let me ask about the district court benches, there's participation, but I don't think that because of the, I suppose, the different level of prosecution is a little, quite a bit different, is that, or do you find that to be, is district court judges enthusiastic as well, or do you know?
Most of my referrals come from county court, talking to some of the district court judges. They like the idea, it's just more present individuals that the fines and court fees comes through county court.
Okay, got it. Well, anyway, I really appreciate what you've, you've really made this program very successful, and it's really due to your commitment to it, to be very candid, that's how I feel and what I know. So, I want to thank you very much, because you've made a huge difference, and you're changing, you're changing lives for people, you really are. And I observed it, and I appreciate it very much.
Well, and it's, and it's come through very candid conversations between Corrections, the bench, United Way, you know, there are no, it's your, it's your problem, it's my problem, it's, it's our collective problem that, so, I mean, I can't speak highly enough of- of corrections to keep those lines of communication open and see where that middle ground is and maximize that middle ground.
Well, I think it's, to tell you the truth, I think it's really dedicated people working together for the betterment of our community. I just, there's nothing better that I like to see. I really appreciate that a lot. Thanks.
Commissioner Borkes?
Well, I also want to give kudos to you, Ron, because as kind of our newest court, county court administrator, it's been amazing, the things that you've been able to do and the way you pull people together to come up with a solution to a problem. So being able to do that in the manner in which you do is really neat to watch, and so thank you for all the work that you've done.
All right. Ron, Lori, thank you, appreciate the work. With that, we'll go on to letter G, which is the Human Resources Committee. Item one is the weekly personnel report from civil service, and that is as submitted. Item two is legislative items, and there are none that are listed outside that are listed on the agenda. We'll move to item three, which is resolution to amend the county board's rules to remove citizens' comments from the weekly board agenda. With that, let me lay out, let me lay out how we proceed on this. Per what's printed on the agenda, Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Duda, if they want to, as names on there, can take five minutes each to introduce the resolution that they want. If they do not, then we'll go into citizens' comments. The light will come on, you'll have five, five minutes to make your comment. At that point, I'll encourage everybody to be attentive, and if something's been said, encourage you to not repeat it exactly. Also, you'll get one chance at the comment piece. After that, I'll ask the board what's their will for the action, if they want to motion a second, and then we'll answer. Then commissioners will have time to comment. So with that, commissioners, Duda and Boyle, if you want to, you can.
I'd be glad to start, and I'll tell you very briefly what, what I'm thinking about all of this. The ruling that we have from legal counsel that tells us that it's a violation of the open meetings law to respond to comments that are made from the podium is really, it's a terrible burden to me, and I think it's disrespectful to the speakers. We have citizens who come down and make comments, and they'll be talking about a whole host of things. And sometimes there are some erroneous facts that are involved, and not about necessarily things that we're concerned with or things that we are concerned with. And it is, to me, it is a real disservice not to have a conversation, and that's my problem. And so what I would like to do is to put some language at the end of this notice about citizens' comments, that after it says that, what it should say is something of this nature, that members of the county board and staff may engage in a conversation with the taxpayer. And I think give public notice of that. And I think the idea that people at home watching on Cox or the citizency in general, citizens in general are going to be disturbed that someone comes down and talks about something, I think if we give a general public notice that everything under the sun is going to be discussed, that's it. And I have no problem with that, and I think it makes great sense. I think this restriction is unreasonable and unacceptable.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. I share a lot of Commissioner Boyle's sentiments here, of the confusion that surrounds this, the frustration when we have had now some somewhat personal attacks on commissioners, and we aren't supposed to respond. That is very frustrating. However, since we put this on the agenda, been hearing from a lot of people, I frankly doubt, I appreciate the conversation, I doubt that I would even vote for this at this point. I had a politically astute friend last week say to me, you got to pick your fights a little bit, and you guys have never listened to the county attorney before now. I mean, how come you feel so obligated to, I can't see Don's face, so I guess I can say that, that we, we frequently, I mean, we, and we do, we often do not do exactly what the county attorney says. And it is my intent, as we go forward, to offer reasonable responses and let the county attorney slap me around. I don't want to get into conversation on something that's not on the agenda, but I think a reasonable response to a citizen's comment is appropriate. I really don't want to pick this fight right now.
I don't either.
And, and so, you know, perhaps this is a discussion item only for today, because I don't want to offend people and pretend that we know everything, but the status quo has some real, real problems and drawbacks that make me uncomfortable. Thank you.
With that, we'll ask people that want to comment, please. And note, just note for the record, the lights will give you your cues.
Thank you, Doug, this is County Attorney. Just briefly, I, first of all, number one is that the advice given by the county attorney has never been to not allow public comment at the meeting.
Correct.
All right? But that seems to be a little bit confused here, and I saw a lady, a letter from the ACLU saying that we've advised to stop public comment, it would be appropriate, and that's not at all what the advice of the county attorney was. The question becomes, by the open meeting law, about discussing matters that aren't on the agenda. It's as simple as that. And so the question becomes, what, what kind of engagement can the commissioner have with somebody in a, in a public comment setting about something that's not on the agenda? Issue being, it's not fair to the public who doesn't know this was going to be discussed or debated as such at the meeting. So that's the limitations with regard to your engagement with the citizen who brings up that other topic. My own opinion personally is that there's a common sense solution here, and that is you listen to what the citizen has to say, they bring up an issue that's not on the agenda, you tell them thank you. If it's something that they're incorrect about, you can, I think the chair can take control here and say, that's not correct, or you need to talk to your commissioner, and if you want that issue brought up to the board at some later meeting, you certainly can do so. It's fine to discuss that. I can't get into a debate with you about that particular issue because it's not on the agenda. I don't think it prohibits you at all from responding, but it just gets to be, if we're going to discuss or have a debate about a particular issue that's not on the agenda, then it's contrary to what the open meeting law says. So I think there's a common sense solution with the chair taking control of the, of the meeting or the discussion that's going to take place between the citizen who's, who's bringing up an issue that's not on the agenda. But we, our advice has never been to not allow citizens to come up during a public comment session and speak their minds about something that they would want to. It's more of a debate or discussion, you know, at this forum between commissioners and the citizen that's not part of the agenda. So I hope that somewhat clarifies things to where we're at here, but we're certainly not saying that we shouldn't have public comment here.
Don, you do have a couple of questions, Commissioner Boyle?
Sure.
And Commissioner Kraft?
Don, I appreciate that, and we, and that was never what we were trying to do either. It got kind of translated a little messy in the paper, and I certainly don't want to get you involved in that, but I know you were. The difficulty is that when someone comes up and makes these, makes statements about, say, the Omaha Public School is doing this and doing that and everything, it's certainly not serving the public to have those kind of, those words hanging out there and people hearing it. And if the chair would allow us to make brief comments, I don't mean debate, and I don't mean discussion, but to say, well, that's really not happening at OPS, you know, give them a call. That's about the extent of what I, we don't want debates, but the chair is not allowing us to do that.
Well, I think that's, I guess I'm just up here to think there's a common sense approach that the chair could, could do that limited, you know, a limited response.
Sure.
It's not a discussion or debate about a topic.
Yeah.
You know, and there's a way to handle it, I think, that, as you said, well, then you need to talk to somebody at the schools.
Right.
Or you can, you can bring that up with me sometime, other time, and maybe we can bring that before the board on the agenda or something.
And that's what I want to do. I just, I mean, if something comes up that's a little bit off the rails, I just like, want to say, well, this is what I think, or someone else may want to do that. But we're not going to get into debates, and we're not trying to, but it is so unnatural not to be able to talk to someone when they say things, you know, I just, I find, I find it so confining. And so, I mean, I will, I've asked the chair, and the chair of the district has said no, and if you'll let me do that once in a while, and you can cut me off if I'm talking too much, which I do, but, you know, if you say okay enough. But I mean, I have no intention of getting into debates with anybody over, over this. I'm glad to hear what you say.
And that's not a critique of the chair, it's just saying, I think that's a possibility that, that, that you could, you could, you have the ability to limit things so it doesn't get into a debate or discussion.
And I think that puts it to bed for me. Let's let it happen, and let's have limited conversations then.
Well, just let me know for the public, so nobody feels like I'm not being consistent here. You are, Commissioner Boyle is asking a question of Commissioner, I mean, of Don Klein, and so that's what he gauging, and you can do that. I just want to make, because there's going to be a point where it's going to be challenged, so I'll.
I'm sorry, I understand.
I'm just making that to the public. No, I'm making that to the public because there's going to be a question about debate. If a commissioner has a question for somebody at the podium, they can ask that now, and I just want to make that clear at this point, so.
I can ask a question?
If you got a question of the speaker, which I'm assuming all of these are, that's what I'm allowing.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that the public knows we're going and that I'm consistent with this.
Good deal.
Commissioner Kraft, I mean, Commissioner Kraft, and Commissioner Borkes, and Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah. Back in, I think, 1997, I attended a meeting, the state attorney general and somebody from National League of Cities came to Nebraska. And I don't recall if it was in Omaha, Lincoln, or Carney, but the state attorney general and this individual gave us a seminar, I guess you could say, it took about a half an hour, discussing the open meeting laws. And their consensus was, it's not on the agenda, you cannot respond. And they were very firm in that. Now, I don't know where the current state attorney general stands, but it'd be good to find out.
Well, Dale Comer was a colleague of mine when I was at the attorney general's office. He was the expert, I think, I'm sure he's the one that gave the seminar on that, he's retired now. And all I'm saying is, and Dale knows what he's talking about, and that, I guess that still answers the question, I think, appropriately, that we're, there's not a debate or discussion, but I think simply if somebody gets up here and says something that's totally wrong, you can say, well, I don't think that's accurate.
So, so then they respond to us, and we need to respond back?
Well, I think that's where the chair comes in, says, look, I'm limiting discussion here, there's not a debate or, or open discussion about it, because this isn't on the agenda. We've allowed the citizen to speak, and that's the end of it.
Okay, and we do that.
And it's difficult to do, I understand.
And sometimes, sometimes the commissioner will keep talking over the chair.
Well, that's, that's, that's a question for how you handle your meeting, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Borkes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, County Attorney. Here, this is what just amazes me, as this has been twisted in such a negative way, it is just mind-boggling to me. So I have talked to numerous people, and once I explain to them that what we're talking about is the portion of the agenda where citizens can talk about an item not on the agenda, they go, oh, I thought you were cutting off all citizen comments. And I was like, no, I know that's what people are throwing it out there, that we're cutting off citizen comments. And so then they go, oh, okay. And so I'm all for leaving it the way it is, but here's the problem, is the chair has tried to do a good job of making sure debate and back and forth doesn't happen, and then he's dogged for trying to hold down to the rules, and, and then it becomes chaos.
Right, and that's not, that, you said, that wasn't a critique about the chair.
No, 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 I'm just saying, this is the problem that we run into, and that's why this issue was brought up, because then you also have not only citizens, but you have commissioners who are confused that this is an agenda item. Right now, this is an agenda item, so everybody can talk, and there can be a back and forth. When it was the citizen comments for an item not on the agenda, that's when we were saying that you cannot go into debate. And then we had commissioners who were getting up from here and going over there and speaking. And, did you start that? Okay, well, but again, then it becomes a joke and a chaotic mess.
Sure.
And so I am all for trying to make this work, because there, I'm actually one who supported putting this on the agenda to begin with. And I don't want to take that away, but I want to try to figure out a way that the chair, and we all respect that, for him or her or whoever it is, controlling the debate of that. And our county attorney representative has been very consistent and very open, and again, consistent, 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 that the chair has followed that opinion that we do not go into debate. And so, again, I think the chair has done an excellent job of trying to keep order of this. I think this can stay on the agenda, and I think commissioners just need to know how to button up and not get into those discussions during that time. I mean, it's that simple, really, it is that simple.
Exactly, and your, your point too, I think, is very important to make, that the public understands that this has nothing to do about debating or discussing topics that are on the agenda.
No.
There, there's, obviously, we want public discussion about those.
Absolutely.
And debate about those issues before decisions get made. It's only about things that aren't on the agenda, and the purpose being, the rest of the public didn't know this was going to be discussed, and so at some point, it has to be limited.
We are the only government that opens up every single committee meeting that we have, including our budget, to the public, where we've invited the public to sit at our table during our discussions. And so for somebody to accuse us of trying to shut off citizen input is absurd.
Right.
There's no other government that does what we do in opening up our governmental processes and committees and work and all of that to the public. And so, again, I have no problem leaving this on the agenda, but we, as commissioners, have to respect the chair in running the meeting and abide by what the county attorney has said, that we do not engage.
Exactly. We agree. I mean, you're right, Teresa.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Anybody. Mr. Klein, thanks for taking a couple hours out of your busy day to come down and meet with us, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. That's it?
Commissioner Boyle, is your question to the county attorney?
Well, you know, I have no intention, as I've tried to say a couple times, but it's getting warped. I have no intention of getting into discussions and arguments with anybody. I'm just saying that when, you know, when Larry comes down and makes a comment about something, this or that, our daughters went to school together, I know him well, and I may want to say something to kind of correct something he said, or my opinion about it, and that's it. I mean, I'm not going to say, okay, Larry, let's get up here and arm wrestle because he beat me, but I don't want to, I don't want to get into those kind of big debates. I have no, but I really think it's unreasonable, and I don't know why, where in the hell did this come from? I mean, was this a Naco thing, the state of Nebraska, or, I mean, who, who came up with this idea, this interpretation of the open meetings law, where we can't have open meetings? I mean, where did that come from? This is not an open meeting. You know, it restricts conversation. It's just, you know, just the thing that people were concerned about is what I'm trying to alleviate, something that restricts free expression, you know, and I'm not talking about getting into debating all these issues, but that's, I want to be able to, and if I have to, I will get up and go around and sit and enter, and keep talking as a private citizen. If it, if this thing falls apart again, I will do that, because I believe in free speech and responding to people courteously and whatever, so.
Sorry to debate the issue. Commissioner Morgan, for the county attorney.
Before I say, did you want to say something?
No, I don't want to.
I want to thank you very much, and I'm in favor of leaving it the way it is. And then I like the idea that you suggested that if there's an incorrect statement, we can respond for that 20 seconds or 40 seconds, and that's the end of it. And we need to respect that, and I want to be certain that our chairperson, whoever it is, and Chris has done an amazing job that I wouldn't want, and I thank you for your efforts, Chris, all the time, privately and here publicly. So thanks for coming down today and clarifying, and thank you.
And I think the purpose of the open meetings law, it's the law, is that so the people, so the citizens can come and make comment about things that are on the agenda, when they know they are. And if they don't, then it's, then that's what makes it problematic, so, anyway.
Thanks a lot, thank you.
So, look, for the public, I know you may want to, but if we don't have to, this is not going anywhere. I can, we count votes now. If we find.
Oh, I'd withdraw my motion, I don't think we need to.
No, I mean, I just want to make sure.
What's that?
You know, there's no, yeah, there's nothing moved, we've got this. If you want to comment, I'm going to limit you to two minutes, because there's nowhere we need to go with this. It's not going anywhere. So if you here and you want to say something, I'm going to limit, because this is, you know, we, this is settled.
Thanks a lot, Don.
Thank you, Don. You'll get after the?
Yep.
Good morning, Doug Kagan, four sixteen South Hundred Thirty, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. We do understand why several county commissioners want to pass this resolution. In the past several months, during sometimes heated exchanges between commissioners and the public, several members of the public have lodged accusations against the personal characters of county commissioners, accusations for which our group has received no evidence. Under current rules interpreted by your legal counsel, commissioners have no recourse to defend themselves against such accusations. Despite deep disagreements that some members of the public, including our NTF members occasionally, have with county board deliberations and decisions, passing this resolution, in our opinion, will muzzle the First Amendment rights of those taxpaying citizens who comment tactfully along with those who show a lack of proper respect and decorum. Understand too, that other government entities allow the taxpaying public to comment on whatever subject they wish to speak, such as the State Board of Education and Omaha Public Schools. Eliminating citizen comments at this point in time when there is contentiousness over Justice Center expansion programs will appear to county residents as merely a means to stifle criticism. Therefore, we offer another solution to this situation. We suggest that the board formally establish conversational rules of conduct for citizen comments on your agenda. NTF would be willing to cooperate with commissioners on formulating such rules as a means to continue enjoying our First Amendment rights in this venue. Thank you.
Any questions, any more from the public? Again, again, this is settled law, but I want to give you time to talk, so please adhere to the lights.
At least Jimenez, five eighteen North Fortieth Street. I appreciate you're not going to act on this. I see citizens' comments as opportunity to have a conversation. When I, you know, I'm at the podium during that time, I don't expect any action on this. Like, I'll say, put some geothermal energy on your buildings. I don't expect you guys to have a resolution written up in a few minutes. So, that's where I am coming from. I do agree with Mike Boyle that if there's something inaccurate, malicious, it should be addressed by, you know, you guys. You guys are responsible for the county. And also, I would suggest that you allow for encouragement. I, I like to get encouragement from elected officials. So that's why I'm, I'm worried that if I have an idea, or somebody has an idea, and you, you guys have a tidbit, it's just easy just to relay it right away, instead of maybe meeting after the, after you guys adjourn, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Encouragement, that that'd be a good conversation.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Good morning, Ed Walsh, three zero one South Fifty Fourth Street here in Omaha. So I made the decision, of course, to come down here this morning after learning this resolution was going to be discussed. And after listening to the conversation, I'm not sure exactly that there's so much agreeability in terms of where everyone wants to go with this, it's impressive. But, but I do want to continue to make a comment briefly, very briefly. But, because, you know, as a citizen of Douglas County, I find the resolution to remove the citizens' comments from the agenda of the board meetings disappointing, and I find it discouraging. And, and if, I'm not a lawyer, but if I understand this, its terms correctly, it's in violation of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. I mean, unless that act has been superseded by something else, I would like just to read that very briefly for the benefit of the people in the audience. The Nebraska Open Meeting Act guarantees that every meeting of a public body shall be open to the public in order that citizens may exercise their democratic privilege of attending and speaking at meetings of public bodies. It's very clearly stated, and we appreciate it a great deal. But in my view, the resolution in front of us flies in the face of a liberal democracy. Our democracy is representative in nature, and I do understand that. But it calls for informed representation, and it presumes representation that reflects the views of its constituents. And actions that restrict open dialogue between the citizens of this county and members of the board in any way whatsoever undermines the very fabric of a free and open speech. And that simply is wrong-minded and dangerous, in my view. So, I would greatly appreciate your decision to choose against this resolution. Thank you very much.
Doctor, you have two questions.
Okay.
You know, what I'd like to say, and what you say is exactly right, but oddly enough, the open meetings law restricts our ability to talk to you. Because it says, anything you talk about has to be on the agenda. And if you come down and want to talk about geothermal heating, which I have an interest in, if you bring that up under the open meetings law, I'm, I'm unable to respond to you. So to, it is actually the law, open meetings law, that is restricting free speech. It's weird.
And I'm appreciative of.
It's just flipped. And so, you know, if it's not on the agenda, we can't talk about it. But now, with the new direction from, his suggestion from the county attorney, which is a terrific suggestion, is that the chair can allow us to say a few words, we're all set.
I agree with you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Commissioner Borgson?
Again, I just want to make sure, because you're stating that we are cutting off citizen comments, and we're not. We are cutting off citizen comments of an item not on the agenda.
I fully understand that.
Not citizen comments when it comes to any other agenda item. So, that's, but people, that's what I'm getting calls, or I had calls on, about this.
I fully understand that.
So I think on our agenda, we need to specifically, Mr. Chair, put under citizen comments, or not under, but as an extension, citizen comments for items and in big, bold letters, not on the agenda.
And I would be in direct opposition of that. It is, it is still, it is still, I'm, I understand what you're saying. I'm simply saying that I think restricting dialogue between a citizen and this board under any circumstances about any topic is unacceptable.
Well, that, again, we aren't restricting, we are not restricting, we are allowing citizens to come to the podium to talk about an item not on the agenda. We will get in trouble with the open meetings law if we go into a dialogue with you because we are in violation, because it wasn't published and on the agenda. So, it's one of these. And so, again, again, I have no problem with keeping it there and allowing you all to come up and talk to us because that's, I, I'm in favor of that.
Well, I'm happy to hear that.
But just do not expect a constant or a good, fluid dialogue back and forth because we can't. Unless you say, you can state your item or your issue, and then you can ask a commissioner to put it on the agenda for further discussion, or discussion. But what that section of our agenda, and that's what you just read, does not apply to that section. We are not limiting citizen comments on any piece of our, of our agenda that where the items are listed on our agenda. And that's been a big misnomer through this, when this first started.
Not for me.
No, but, but how it got perceived through the media and then constantly brought to our attention, so.
Well, I feel like I've understood this from the beginning, but.
No, Doctor, thank you. Your comments should be taken up with the State Senator.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Anyone else?
Good morning or afternoon, everyone. I did come to oppose the resolution today to remove the citizens' comments from the weekly county board agenda.
Ms., can you please state your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, Susan Gumm, ninety-seven eighteen South One Hundred Seventy-Sixth Ave., Omaha, Nebraska, sorry. In an attempt to end misstatements from the public, the Douglas County Board's resolution would end all comments from the public denying citizens the opportunity to speak freely on non-agenda topics. The Douglas County Board Rules of Order provide for citizens' comments, but apparently do not provide for the handling of misstatements made by members of the public during those comments. This is not a classroom where the teacher doesn't know who is misbehaving, so the entire class is punished. Is limiting every citizen's freedom of speech by removing citizens' comments the answer? In addition to removing citizens' comments from the weekly county board agenda, the resolution also reaffirms the board's complete discretion over the meeting agenda. A citizen may be denied the right to speak freely on a concern or complaint if the board deems their issue unworthy of being placed on the agenda. A citizen's complaint may never be a matter of public record. Most local governing bodies adhere to the principle that citizens should have the right to address their elected officials in a public forum. The public has the right to be heard, but under this resolution, there is no guarantee that citizens will have the opportunity to exercise their freedom of speech to comment on their specific issues of concern. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Huh, boy. I just opened up my world, Harold, and found out this was the topic today. Oh, boy, I had time to prepare. You guys gave me an hour's notice of this topic today? And I'm sorry, I, I guess I'm guilty. I have made some accusations, I guess, that are not true. But it seems to me like there's been some by the other side that are not true at all. As I read this, Mike, Mr. Boyle, it just, once again, flies in the sense of what I think common sense is, okay? There was a pamphlet back in seventeen fifties or something called Common Sense. It was rather commonsensical, and people bought into it. And they finally got mad at the king and said, because the king doesn't respond, and we gave him how many opportunities, we're going to separate from the king. And we don't like his loyal governors, we don't like his commissioners. We're going to replace them all. Okay, move on. The Bellevue City Council, what's different between what they did and what this revolution says? This resolution says the same thing to me, that they're going to cut it out. Well, do you mean cutting it out of the document? Just taking the words out, but I can still come up? What do you mean? It's not clear, not very commonsensical. Why would I want to talk about the new cereal that's on the advertisements lately? That's, that's not on the agenda today, but obviously I could talk about that. Why would I want to do that? You guys just don't understand. That if I do my homework and I know if I read the paper at three AM instead of seven, I might want to come down and comment on what you're, what you're talking about today. But you're telling us you cannot do that.
Thank you, Larry, appreciate it.
And I think.
Thank you, Larry.
One thirty-second. We're down from three to two to one, zero.
You got ten seconds.
The revolution was about this type of thing, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, there's no need for action, but we have a commissioner who wants to comment, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I oppose this resolution in its specifics and in its spirits. I may not agree with what you say, but I'll always support your right to say it. And you should be allowed to come to this public forum and speak your mind. We have been advised, as the resolution points out, not to respond to public comment. And this goes to how the law is written. There are portions of the law that says you shall do certain things, and portions of the law which say you may do certain things. Those are mandatory portions and discretionary portions. We have been advised on a discretionary portion because it could conceivably open the county up to liability. This is a risk management question, this is not a public meeting question. And I respect the county attorney's opinion on that, but it's an opinion. And how that discussion goes has not been consistently ruled on by this chairman. So that, we don't have any consistent rule on who can talk and who can engage in discussions. If you've watched this, you know that. As recently as last week, there was a discussion back and forth from board members on certain things. And then, the next board member who wanted to engage in the discussion was, was stopped from discussing that because there's not supposed to be discussion. So there's no consistent rule, it's just a capricious ruling of the chair. The resolution before you has language that says the county board members will, would still have the discretion to place items on the agenda. This is not true. Part of the reason that we had the discussion from the podium last week was because Commissioner Boyle and I had requested that an item relative to the Justice Center question be placed on the agenda. The chairman, in his discretion, said, no, I'm not going to place it on the agenda. So, the only place to discuss that was in the citizens' comment portion of the agenda. An attempt to shut up that discussion has been ongoing. And you don't have to be a daily observer of the board's actions to see that. And part of the motivation for taking citizens' comments off the agenda is to shut that door. When the chair capriciously rules that something won't be on the agenda because the chair doesn't want it discussed, then the citizens' discussion portion becomes the only outlet on this meeting for those discussions because it's not on the agenda. So if you shut that door, then there'll be no discussion. And that's, you know, an attempt to shut up discussion on a very important issue going forward. So this was a bad stab at shutting people's right to speak to their representatives down. I'm, I'm glad that it's failing. I would oppose it in its current form or any future form. The citizens' comment thing is part of our job. We work for you, we're supposed to listen to you. You're supposed to be able to talk to us. Any restriction on that is going to have my opposition now and forever. Thanks.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I, I hate to admit being so disingenuous, but I figured doing something outrageous would kind of bring the discussion up, and that's what I did. I had never had any intention of stopping people from speaking at the podium on anything they want to talk about. What I did want to do has been accomplished, the county attorney says you can have a slight conversation back, a few words. That's all I was after. Got done. So, if Commissioner Duda will agree, I'll withdraw the resolution before us.
Then put forward, no need to withdraw.
Okay, fine, then I, I have no interest in pursuing it. But I did add some language to the, the, and we can discuss it at some time, but it does call for a limited discussion, conversation, not discussion, but limited conversation back, as the county attorney said was appropriate. So, that's what, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's patience on this, and sorry about all the misunderstandings. And Commissioner Borgson is right, we never intended to shut everything down.
Teresa York, County Attorney's Office. If I may, I'd like to direct this body to eighty-four fourteen eleven. That statute, a part of the Open Meetings Act, says that this board shall give reasonable, publicized notice of its meeting. Included in that notice is the agenda. That statute says that agenda items must, shall, be sufficiently descriptive to give the public reasonable notice of matters to be considered in the meeting. And that is why we're here and having this discussion. I want to be very clear, I heard my boss, Don Klein, speak earlier, and it, it was not having a conversation, it was responding with civility, it was correcting a misstatement. That is very, very different from what I've heard follow those comments. I've heard people say dialogue, I've heard people say conversation. The answer to that under the Open Meetings Act is that it is a possible violation of the Open Meetings Act, just looking at that statute. And so this board needs to be very aware that it must provide notice to the public. And it is a fairness question, not for the people in this room, but for the people who would have come to this room if they had known it was on the agenda. And I know that this body is very concerned about openness for the public, for the people who did not attend. And so, the board must be cognizant of that moving forward. And there are, there are options available to this board. If someone were to get up at citizen comments and speak on a matter, and the board wanted to dialogue, they could look to put it on at the subsequent meeting. There are jurisdictions, Grand Island has a form that they make available to the public, and the public can fill that form out. So there are other jurisdictions that provide avenues for the public to put it on as an agenda item, to provide the requisite notice, and for the board to engage in dialogue and conversation. And I would encourage the board to look at those options, should you want to engage in dialogue or conversation.
Thank you, Teresa. Let me briefly say in closing that, Don, thank you for the comments, and I'll administer them accordingly. You know, my, my role here is to try to be fair in that respect, but let me just tell.
But let me just tell everybody and to the people in the public that, you know, particularly in these day and times in this country, I would never think of stifling anybody's free speech for process, democracy, or anything to that degree. But because you're in this country, that is a benefit, a privilege, a very high privilege that should be taken seriously. But let me say whoever runs this meeting after me can do it like they want to, but you come up here, I'm going to ask you to follow what I'm telling you. And nobody can say that I haven't given any fair knowledge, no chair chance on anything of that. That's the chair's role, to be fair. So I'll tell you in the future, we'll change the rules to do that, but from now on, just be clear. You be derogatory in any form or fashion, and I'm going to cut you off because it is a privilege. Adhere by the guidance I'm giving you, you can do whatever you want to do. Now, let me just say in closing, the chair of any board, and people up here have had that, no chair has power on their own. Chair has power and given to them by four people. So to Commissioner Kavanaugh's point about me having this dominance, I mean, my God, I wish I was that. But I'll say in form that let me open you up to a little bit of baseball, inside baseball. You know, the question is not me not putting his item on the agenda. The issue is him not having the board relation skills to sell it. So with that, any board member on here can put something on if they have the support of four members, and I would never deny that. And those are open rules that we have. So in that respect, we'll go accordingly. Thank you for the discussion today, Commissioner Boyle, and I appreciate it.
Well, and here's, you know... What I'm really suggesting is we put an agenda item on that says that, somewhere along in all this about citizen comments, that however, members of the county board and staff may respond briefly to a taxpayer. Uh, that's really startling. I just don't see, you know, if someone brings something up...
Can we, because I've got some points I want to add to that. Can I take that and run it by Teresa?
Yeah, let's bring this back.
And we really don't have to put it on. We can just add the language if everybody's there.
But I think if it's an agenda item, then you can do it. Pass that over to him. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. With that said, we do have a need for executive session for two items, which are labor negotiations and litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second. And I always enjoy talking with Mary Ann. She always says you have to have the last word when I say no. I don't.
And again, we're going to executive session for labor negotiations and litigation.
Go, yes, Mike.
Oh, let me just mention before we pass that the, there will be a meeting tonight at UNO at 6 o'clock to unveil the latest designs for the project on the MUD site. 6 o'clock tonight at UNO. Thank you.
Motion passes 6 to 0. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent.
...